I'd like to welcome you to our city council meeting this Thursday, December the 10th, 2020. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is getting the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allowed three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. We thank you for participating in your city government. With that, I call this council meeting to order. Could we all please stand for the invocation? I'd like to welcome Pastor David Nye, pastor of the Christ Our Savior Fellowship Church. Please remain standing at the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this beautiful day that you've blessed us with. And now, Lord, as this council gathers this evening, we pray that you would anoint them with wisdom, direction, and give them guidance. Lord, we pray that every decision that is made here this evening would be for the betterment of the citizens of St. Cloud. And Lord, we continue to ask your blessings upon our city, upon our state, and upon our nation. And we ask all of this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and we pray in his name. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. May be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Here.
Councilmember Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
At this time, we'll have a presentation from Marjorie Craig, our Environmental Utilities Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council. I think I believe I can take my mask off for the presentation.
Yes, you sure can.
Okay. So first, we'll start with the water report, and we're still, we're not done yet, but most of the resin has been removed from the system, and we'll continue to tell the pipes are clean. During October and November, we completed an additional 6.7 miles of flushing, and we're in the evaluation stage, the surveying of customers. This shows our customer calls or contacts, and you can see the trend is still downward. And you'll see spikes are usually when we've done flushing, or if we do get a call, we'll go out there and also look into it, flush that area, make sure, and see if that's resin or another issue. And with that, I still encourage anyone that is seeing any discoloration, if you receive contact, please, please ask them to contact us so that we can put that in, because we're not getting complaints, as you can see, and we want to make sure that we are addressing the entire issue. So with that, we'll move to the sewer system.
Could be moved to that. We have any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. I just want to check on the slide. It said 16.7 miles, but you said 6.7, so I was just...
It's my horse boy. I don't know. It's not COVID or anything, but yes, it's 16.7.
16, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, and on those slides, and if you ever want to copy, it just has the total, kind of keep the totals on the side of all the ice picking, all the flushing. So with that, it's the sanitary sewer overflows that we experienced in the high, the wet weather events, and we haven't stopped looking for it. We're on week seven of the manhole inspections. We still haven't found a big inflow, but we found some, definitely some significant inflow. And as you know, when we take, when they give us our condition assessments, we'll continue to prioritize repairs and rehabs. So we're also conducting some sewer lateral lining, and that will also help within flow. And these pipes, the main pipes have already been lined, so this is a matter of just lining the laterals, which is from the main line to the house side of the sewer system. So when they go in, you may see them, they TV it, they clean it, they line it, and they TV it to show us that they, what they've done. And this is the inflow abatement program. They've done 640 manholes out of 795, and so far sealed 251. So they found 251 with some inflow issues. This is just an example. It's not important that you see all the details, but it shows us the location, picture of the inside of the pipe, and a bunch of information that we can use to prioritize our rehabs of those manholes. Two different, these are just two different reports. So in the end, we'll have 795 pages of just these types of reports, plus additional. And with that, thank you very much for your attention. Do you have any questions?
We are certainly incredibly grateful for all the hard work the department's doing, and thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I love it.
Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we come to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided the opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the residing officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. The first request is from Billy Rocker. Once again, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Billy Rocker. I don't know if I live in Socialville, or do I live in St. Cloud, but I live at 6128 Waterfield Way, St. Cloud, hopefully St. Cloud, Florida. Okay, in 1987, I bought a piece of property out of West 192. It used to be a fruit stand. A few years later, I bought another 10 acres adjacent to it. That was about 1992. Around 2003 or '04, I bought the bar and a little bit of piece of property. And then around 2013, I bought another five acres. So I put together 17 acres. About 2014, I came in here wanting to develop the 17 acres. Instead of doing 17 acres at once, I did the project as our money came in. So I did Phase 1, which was five acres. And then, as the money came in, we did Phase 2. So then, last year about this time, my daughter goes, can we do Phase 3? And I said, yes. I said, I need to finish a project in Kissimmee, and we get that finished, we'll start Phase 3. So around December of last year, January of this year, hired the engineer to finish up the project. COVID came in March, and I didn't know if we were going to have a good governor or have a put you out of business governor. So we stopped our projects. We paid for the building over in Kissimmee, let it lay on the ground, and we'll just wait this out. Miraculously, the government printed $3 trillion. Everything, everybody's happy, and so we said, hey, everybody's happy, let's go ahead and finish Kissimmee. And so probably around June or July, sometime in that, I said, go ahead and, let's go ahead and do St. Cloud, because St. Cloud is permitted uses. We have a piece of property that's permitted. I went to the county more than 20 years ago and got the property the way I wanted it, permitted. Extortion showed up. In order to join St. Cloud, you had, or use the water and sewer, you have to annex in the city. Didn't want to annex in the city. Liked being where I was at, had good zoning, could do what I wanted. Was told numerous times that I would not have my property rights taken away. For the last three months, the city employees have been telling me, I have no property rights. My property rights are on hold. I'm not allowed to do Phase 3 of my project. I heard that first time in September. I heard it in October, and I heard it yesterday. So I need for y'all to either tell me we're living in, you know, we're living in a world where upside, you know, right's right is wrong, wrong's right. It's just, it's crazy. I have permitted uses I'm asking for. I'm not asking for a conditional use. I'm not trying to buy a piece of property and get it rezoned. I already had my zoning. And so I need y'all tonight, there's five of y'all, I need three of y'all to tell him to let me go forward, or tell him we're living in Socialville, communist, my name is the Russian bear Ivan Koloff, and I need to know that so I can go forward with our plans. So I'm just talking tonight, I need, I need to be approved. I've got a project that's ready to go. So either say I can go forward or take away my property rights, because I know when y'all run for office, y'all are for people's property rights, oh, we're gonna do the right thing. You betcha, boy. We want business in St. Cloud. We're gonna make St. Cloud friendly to do business with. It's gonna be so easy to come to St. Cloud. And then, they print up this silly list, and this is the dumbest list I've ever seen.
You and...
Pass that out. Just pass that out.
Mayor, can I ask what that document is, please?
Yes.
It's a document that was just invented on November the 12th. It out, every, there's probably 25, 30 things here, and I have tenants...
I just, sorry, I just asked what the document is. Excuse me. So essentially, what's, what this is, is it has to do with the, the direction from the city council to change, change, create an overlay district that impacts certain properties within the city that have permitted issues and permitted rights. That's what that is. I'm assuming that this is part of the ordinance that would be presented and ultimately that staff's been working on for, for a long time now to present to you. So at this point, it's not, it's not before you, though, that, for that issue. The issue that's before you is whether you want staff to continue with the same direction that you've given them over the last several months. You have a question?
Question. Mr. Rocker, you and I talked this morning, met with you, and I've got the pictures, what you just sent, and I read, I read pretty much what you handed me, and it looks like to me, you and I started laughing a little bit, and I said, it looks like this much that I see you can't do is about 80 or 90% that people in the city of St. Cloud want to do. And we're just gonna regulate them to death. We're gonna stop this thing, and this is not right. I mean, you, you've got things that are already built all the way around you. You've got Kisselback that's getting ready to be out there. That's gonna be illegal, too. I mean, you're not, you're, we're gonna stop that. It's just too much restrictive, and we want commercial. I've always heard, everybody says, bring the commercial. We need that money. We need for more, you know, employees to be working here instead of driving to Orlando or Kissimmee. But, and I read this thing today, Bill, I don't know where he came from, all this verbiage here, but it, it's just, it's so restrictive. I've got nine commercial, I've got seven, excuse me, seven over in Kissimmee, commercial rentals. Six of my commercial rentals are in downtown Kissimmee, and they are allowed. This is not allowed in St. Cloud. That does not make, this, I don't know where it came from. Who, who created this?
Are you asking me a question?
Yes, sir, I'm asking a question.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Cooper, that came from the Planning and Zoning Department, based on direction I was given from the city council for a 192 overlay.
I remember portion of the overlay, and we talked about it, but some of these items that you just can't have. And I understand we don't want a whole lot of, we don't want to have a bed and breakfast, or a lot of these beds, you know, places that are selling bedding and bedding and bedding, and, and a lot of, a lot of these cell phones, but I don't think you can stop that. You can't say, okay, we can only have two in the city of St. Cloud, and you can't go three, or you can't, oh, four or five, because if you're, there's other horizons, and there's T-Mobile and all these other ones, and they want to be here, it's, it's gonna have citizens that are working here, that are gonna be working for these companies here, and they're making money, and they're gonna pay for the, to the city. It just doesn't make good sense to, to stop this, what we're trying to do. At least, I understand an overlay, we wanted to try and get commercial in commercial areas, but as far as restricting and getting it to stop so much of this stuff, that doesn't, that doesn't, doesn't fit good with me. I'm sorry. So...
Would anyone else in the council like to speak?
Sure. Go ahead.
For the record, I did meet with Mr. Rocker as well in my shop. I think the intent of this overlay was to, I'm, I'm not sure about all these things on here, but it was to sort of stop the, and Mr. Rocker is part of the storage unit part. It was really a way to go, okay, do we want charter schools on 192? Do we want storage units on 192? We started picking up some businesses. A lot of these have been thrown in there, but I, I kind of understand what he's kind of going through. I'm actually, believe we're not a supporter, because he actually started the process in Phase 1 and Phase 2, and then got kind of caught up in the minutia of us going through some change. So I don't know how to go forward to allow him to do his project without setting precedent, or we're just gonna take this thing and throw it out. I really think it's an important part of our growth of our city. Again, you can't tell what can go in there in a commercial spot, but once you get that commercial spot and they leave, then somebody else is gonna probably come in, and I don't want to obviously make it too restrictive where you can't do anything. So that's sort of the intent of the overlay, was to kind of get an idea of what we would want in those areas. And we're not trying to make it a winter park. We're not trying to make it anything like that. We're just trying to say, okay, maybe we don't need another auto zone, the third or fourth auto zone in the same area, or something like that, so...
Mr. Rocker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Rocker would just read a few of these items that you cannot supposedly put...
He doesn't need to do that.
This is a working piece. This can change.
And again, I'd point out to you that that document that handed out was a internal, was staff was working on a prospective ordinance to come back to the city council, at which time the council would have a public hearing on it and decide how many of, if any of those items that are out there. The issue at hand, and the issue frankly that staff needs some direction on, is related to specific projects that have been, that are in the pipeline, as Mr. Rocker's is, and that might ultimately fall within direction that the city council had given in previous meetings and has been discussed. Mr. Askew mentioned it, a couple of the items that were specifically discussed with regard to future uses, and his project falls into one of them. The storage units was one of them. So under the law, there's a provision in the law that's referred to as the pending ordinance or pending change doctrine. And when, and when a city is working on a change of its ordinances, then the city has an ability to essentially say, we are not going to approve these uses, even though they're currently permitted, because the council has provided clear direction about what they want to address and deal with that. That's the position that Mr. Rocker is. What I think he's asking you for is essentially, he's asking you basically not to have that applied to him at this point, and I think that's really what his request is. You certainly can do that. You certainly can take the position that we are not gonna rely on the pending ordinance or change, or zoning change doctrine, and work towards an overlay district. And when the overlay district is approved after an ordinance, then it would apply to all the projects after the date that it's been approved, and you certainly can do it that way. Staff has taken the position based on the direction of the city council, that city council wanted this to be implemented as quickly as possible, and therefore we relied on the pending doctrine. So what we just need is some direction from this council as to how you'd want that to apply.
Well, I also talked to Mr. Rocker prior to the meeting, and my understanding, of course, now realize isn't correct, that this was a proposed proposal, that we would workshop it and sit down and go over this list and make final decisions on what would and would not be in that area. But now, it's like it's, like you said, it's pending, and that's like it's law, and that doesn't make sense, especially when he's gone to, to previous councils and previous building officials and been given assurances that he, you know, he will be able to get this work done, and then now the rug's been pulled out from under him because, you know, we, we got something pending. To me, doesn't make sense, and he ought to be able to go forward with previous promises that were given to him by previous councils, which would have been people just like us. I think he ought to be able to move forward.
So this is the first I'm seeing of the list, and listen, I know it's easy for us to throw stones at something that gets created. It's harder to create than to, you know, throw stones at something that gets handed to you, but, you know, I remember the conversation being more pertaining to storage facilities, not so much this entire list. And, and I think I've got a more moderate approach. Like, I don't want to say we don't want to take into consideration pending ideas that are going on in the city, and, you know, because it seems to take a long time for us to get our rules in place. But in this particular case with Mr. Rocker, I mean, he wasn't in the pipeline. He was at the, he was already through the pipeline and pretty much at the finish line, so I, I think he's a special case in this. I mean, I don't want to say, you know, we're not gonna enforce this rule because we're, you know, we've all said we didn't, you know, we wanted to, to create this overlay, but I think in his particular case, like, he's already gotten approvals to do this work. So, I mean, I think, for me, like, I don't want to throw anything out, like wholesale. I still think this is what we are working towards. Maybe we need to tweak this list. Maybe we need to work on some things, and I think it also needs to be in place to prevent an onslaught of, you know, other things to come in, because it might take six more months for us to put this in place. But in the case of Mr. Rocker, I think he was already done with all of his approvals, so it seems too late to put this regulation onto him.
Mr. Trace?
I didn't, this is the first time hearing about this, too. I didn't know this was coming up, but I was one of the biggest ones to push for this because we, I don't want our 192 to look like further west 192. A lot of that's going through a resurgence now, because it's 30 or 40 years old, and there's, there's old buildings, dilapidated buildings that are getting torn down. I, I don't want us to be right there, right at the beginning. So I was, I was pushing for this on a lot of our major corridors. I'm also one that I don't like moving the cheese, you know, once the board's been set. So, you know, if, if this already came through and is already approved, then I don't, I don't really know why we're talking about it, because it's, it's an approved use, approved everything go. But, you know, there's things that we specifically brought up when we talked about this before that aren't on this list. There are ones that, yeah, like everyone else has said, that I would be fine with. So I didn't realize we were enforcing rules that hadn't been adopted yet, because a lot of folks spend a lot of time and money on going through this process just to get stopped by something that they can't, they can't read in code yet. So I didn't realize we were, we were enforcing rules that...
We have full construction plans, site plans. We're, we're done. We've done architectural, everything. Right. So...
So, Mr. Mizrahi, so do we need, do we need a motion on this?
Well, what we as staff are looking for is, obviously, the council was very, this is a very important issue to the council, as staff heard it several months ago, and staff was, was moving forward with the idea that council wanted this to be implemented as soon as possible. As Councilwoman Matheny pointed out, sometimes these things take a while, so there are projects. With regard to that, uses that are on the list, most of those uses are permitted uses in these areas, so they all, to a certain extent, have the same level of entitlement that you're, that you're, that we're talking about here, because they are permitted uses as Mr. Rocker's project is permitted uses. So what we would need from the councils is essentially a confirmation that the council is okay with not implementing any of these changes, not relying on that pending ordinance document until the council has completely vetted an ordinance and adopted it. And that would mean that anything that is currently approved, moving through the process, would be approved as it is and would not be affected by any future change that the council has, whether it's done two months from now or six months from now.
Mr. Cooper?
One real quick question. Mr. Rocker, it looks like to me, when I saw the picture that you gave me this morning, it looks like your 10 acres is a budding to the adjacent 10 acres, so you're gonna have right in the same corridor area that you're just gonna add to it.
That's correct. We're just doing Phase 3.
So it's not like you're, not like you're moving a, a two or three miles down the road, and we're putting another one, and then we're gonna move another mile or two, and we're gonna put another one. This is all in one compassed one area. And that's, that was where I didn't have a problem of putting it all in one area, but if you start stretching it out, I will tell you this, if you stretch it out again, and you start wanting to go another block or two or three blocks down the road, I'm gonna have a problem. But now I don't, not right here. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mizrahi?
And, and Mr. Anderson, I were just talking about, so to make it clear, we would ask that the council re-stick with this idea, we're working on this pending, but set the date as of today, so that anything that's currently so-called in the pipeline, which staff has been working on, would, would follow, anything that comes after today would be subject to the ultimate ordinance that the city council adopts. And that would address basically Mr. Rocker's position, be fine, and then some...
But see, I don't like that. I don't like that for my neighbor who has permitted uses, because you don't know how y'all are gonna end up voting in six months or a year when this takes place. So you know what's funny? If we were shut down right now and had no economy, instead of me paying impact fees, I'd be getting no impact fees. I remember doing projects when I didn't have to pay an impact fee, where I could pay whenever I wanted to pay. People would be begging you to spend money. The city's walking with a little swag, because there's some stuff going on that's, the St., the city of St. Cloud didn't cause this good stuff. Our governor caused this good stuff, because people are coming here from Crazyville to set up shop here. So I would, you should leave it like it is until y'all actually vote. Now, y'all might vote tomorrow, but after you vote for an, because it's, it's seven and a half miles long, 192. It's very different from one and the other in the middle. But you, you can't just do one overlay. It has to be different, because it's all, it's seven and a half miles long.
All right.
But you can't take away people's property rights until y'all adopt something new. They need to be warned, hey, we're fixing to, really lay it to you and hurt your property values. They need to be warned about that.
And I would be in agreement. I don't think anything should be put in force until we actually rule on an ordinance or what an overlay is, and we decide what the prohibitions are gonna be.
Y'all might decide not to do an overlay. Y'all might decide, we, we could go next year instead of having coronavirus. It could be actually a real, the plague, and then you're gonna be begging business to come here. But this goes against a normal economy, the economy that I've been involved in since 1982. This stifles growth and causing the economy to go round and round.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we not, how, how do I word that in a way that we not...
Well, if the council's direction is that this, that we not rely on what's referred to as the pending ordinance doctrine, just that's, that's the direction that we need.
I would recommend that we...
Okay. We don't need a motion. We just need to understand that there's direction, and that's how staff will proceed.
Until we, until we actually rule what our overlay's gonna be.
I'd second that in a heartbeat.
And then one thing I want to clarify, that there might be things that come up. We just need to clarify that when some of this direction is given, that if something does come up that's big enough that has to put a halt on something, then you, you just clarify that, and we actually vote on things instead of just...
Trace, we, we want to make sure that the citizen that own this property on this corridor, that they get the, the chance to come up here and talk...
Oh, 100% agree.
Before we make this decision of having a 10-page document that says you can't do this, can't do that, can't do that, wait, let's talk to the citizens that are getting ready to build something commercial right there on 13th Street. So I think we need to mesh them to do at the same time.
100% agree.
Do I have three people? Do you support that?
Guys, I think we...
Mr. Cooper, you support that?
Yes, sir.
All right. We got enough, we got enough direction on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have a timeline of when that item is going to come up? Because we talked about it once. I think we need a workshop in January.
I'd like that workshop in January, because like I said, there are some things that we know are coming down the pipeline, so we can clarify what that overlay actually looks like, and get public input, and then go ahead and vote on that over the next 90 days.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Rocker. You're done? All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much, gals. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you. Thank you for your, thank you.
Mr. Underly?
Everybody spread out this year. I I have two main things that I'd like to address to the board. And of course, with COVID going on, a lot of things have come to a standstill or slowed down. However, the rooftops continue to be built around here. And on your Economic Development Advisory Committee, we've asked for the last five years to try to look for some area where that we can designate for jobs because there are no jobs going to be built if all we have are homes around here. It's gonna be endless traffic. There's just gonna be driving out in the morning, driving back in the afternoon. We mentioned before that Mount Dora, they secured 13-acre location in partnering with a developer to build a nice development or business park up there. Ocala took alongside their US, let's see, no Interstate 75, and they developed a nice business park. They got a FedEx and a Chewy distribution center. Fantastic location, jobs, and probably good some taxes, too. We need to look at something like that and press forward. We're losing it every day. More and more rooftops. I see concrete going here and there. The county's idea of jobs, we can see what they did on Note, 7-Eleven, Circle K. They did it on Narcusi Road, too, 7-Eleven, Circle K. That's not gonna sustain us. We need better jobs than just those jobs. We have lost Note. Note would have been a fantastic place for our business development. When I say business development, I'm not talking about another Walmart or anything like that. I'm talking about good jobs. We lost, of course, county lost Narcusi. East 192, we're gonna lose that. Looks a lot like homes and rooftops out there. Even Kissimmee Park, right at the turnpike, logical, so logical for some type of industrial, large commercial development. It's gonna be 5,000 homes, 10,000 homes. Who wants to live next to a six-lane turnpike highway? It's just not logical. Building planners, they don't do that. Urban planners don't do that. So we we need to get on this because every time, I've been on your committee now five years, and it's just a constant, we need this, we need this, we need this. And every time we go down the roads, there's more homes. It's just not gonna sustain us. And to go right along with that is, we have five main roadways, north and south in this city. One all, from the beginning or from a long time ago, Michigan Avenue had schools on it. We understand that. But in the last four years, we now have taken every other large main artery, north and south, and we put schools on it. What does that do? School zones. Traffic twice a day slows down all of our main arteries in this city. Neptune Elementary School was built in the right location, in the middle of a subdivision. You don't even notice a school zone. It's hidden inside the subdivision. It does not slow down Old Canoe Creek. But now we have another one going on, regular Canoe Creek, the new charter school. Now Canoe Creek is going to be slowed down with school zones twice a day. So city council representatives, I'm just asking for the future of Saint Cloud. We get something in here and we need to get it quick to work with other companies, developers for a business park, commercial park, industrial park, whatever you want to call it, so we can have some good jobs. And not a 7-Eleven like what the county seems to want to put down here. All they want are rooftops on this side of the county, it seems. So, and please, watch the schools on the main highways. It's just traffic.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
So if Andre could come up, I just have a question, Mr. Anderson, sorry. So we are trying to help out with that. We have reduced impact fees or waived portions of impact fees for commercial development. We have raised impact fees on residential development. Sure, two of the big triggers we can, we can move with that. My question for Mr. Anderson is, we've been updating our future land use elements for a lot of our, or our comprehensive plan elements, a lot of our comprehensive plan elements. One of the last ones to do is future land use element. Kind of what's the timing of that? And when's the next time we can have a workshop on that?
Yes. So interesting enough, tomorrow, we have a director's day to discuss our strategic plan moving forward for the city. And that is on one of the items that I'll be discussing with the city manager to discuss the timeline for that. My, my anticipated timeline for update of the comprehensive plan is for mid to late summer. And that is because we are also required to do an evaluation and appraisal of our comprehensive plan and send it to the Department of Economic Opportunity by February. And then we have one year from that date to bring our plan into compliance, meaning have it updated. My anticipation is to do it sooner than a year.
So this summer plus a year is the the maximum, but pushing to do that earlier?
No. From February next, 2021 to February 2022 is the deadline.
Perfect. And Mr. Underly, the whole purpose of that 192 overlay that we just talked about was the charter school thing. Of just, let's not have schools. Granted, the school board can do whatever they want on property that they own, you know, as long as they don't need a waiver from us. But the whole purpose of that was to stop some of those uses that clog up those intersections and clog up everything there. So yes, push the schools into the neighborhoods is a, is a great move. So.
Thank you.
Finished with me?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online that has requested to speak?
I received a, an email for, from Hughette Crumpler to read something into the record on her citizens here. She says, my name is Hughette Crumpler. I live on Michigan Avenue in Saint Cloud, Florida. Phone number 47906-8826. I want to encourage the council to make decisions which represent the best interest of all the citizens of Saint Cloud. I ask you to operate with maximum transparency and that you remember just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do it. It was very disappointing to turn to Channel 499 on Spectrum and not to be able to see the meeting take place. Whatever the technical reasons are for this not occurring, I ask that you solve it immediately. This is a solvable problem if you make it a priority. She has a couple of questions. Question, what is the COVID-19 update for the city? Are there any further actions which a city can take to protect our citizens from infection? Maybe offering free masks or placing public announcements on TV emphasizing Saint Cloud's commitment to getting all our citizens to do everything in their power to protect themselves and others. Next question, how to, or has 17th Street sidewalk been completed? Next question, update on water projects. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sturgeon, would you like to speak to any of those questions?
Yes, the sidewalks completed. No, what was the other one? I'm sorry.
Channel 499.
Channel 499. That, we're not set up to do that and
From here? But is YouTube an option?
Yes, it is being transmitted via web.
Can you email her back the link?
I did let her know that we were streaming, but she don't have that ability.
And when it comes to COVID-19?
We're continuing to update the public through our COVID-19 on our website and participating with accounting and emergency management meetings once a week. And I think everybody pretty much knows what the protective standards are right now. You know, wash your hands, wear a mask, safe distancing, you know, limit travel in group gatherings.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Sir, no, we got one.
Thank you. Would anyone else want to speak to the council at this time? If not, we will move forward to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contain items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If any one of the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, are there any items the council wants to address? Mr. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. I'd like to see about pulling D, G, I.
Why you slow it up?
D, G, I, P. And just a quick question about R. Nothing special on that one. Just a question.
What was the next one after I?
R or P?
And was that a B as in boy or D as in dog?
P as in Peter.
No, the first one you said.
D as in Delta.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Let's look at item number, item D.
I'll, I'll have a couple more when you guys
Okay, I'm sorry.
Item F as in Frank. Item, that's good. Item N as in Nancy. All right, that's it. It's it.
Any other items?
Nope.
Item number D, Mr. Cooper?
Thank you. Could we, Bill, could we, somebody talk to us about the solid waste, the rates again?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nassim Gandor, Public Works Director.
I know where we are. I just want to
Yep.
reiterate, if you'd come back up.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to stop you. I'm sorry.
Hello, sir. This is Nassim Gandor, Public Works Director. Do you have a specific question on this, sir?
No, I think the rates again, there again, I don't know. Because I understand now that we've got so much money in the building officials for permits, we got so much money, we gotta spend it. And I understand the county and the city of Kissimmee's got the same problem. And throughout the state of Florida's pretty much got the same problem. And I'm kind of worried that maybe down the road, we're gonna do the same thing and, and solid waste and water and sewer and all the rest of them. We're, we're gonna get too much money, oops, we don't know what to do with it. And then the state says, you've got to spend it, but you can only spend it like for the building department. You can only spend it for the building department. So we're gonna, now we're gonna spend $2.2 million over there at the building department and City Hall's gonna grow. And I understand that we're, we're kind of tight and getting, running out of space. But I just don't know that we need to constantly keep the citizens, they can't just keep, this COVID-19's slowing everything down. You know, these rates keep going, increasing, increasing. And I'm, I'm just, I'm looking out for the little guys and trying to slow it down a little bit, you know? How much money we got sitting in that bank right now, just in that fund right now? It's, it's getting pretty good size chunk of money there.
Yes, sir. So was that everything? Or would you like me to answer? So speaking specifically on solid waste, on solid waste funds, I will not speak with, in regards to the other departments. With the solid waste, before we came, came forth with the year, implementing year two of the approved five-year rate plan that was approved last November, I believe, of 2019.
Yes.
Specifically to address the, the rates of the solid wa, the solid waste rates to ensure that the solid waste division and operations do not run into deficiency, we sat down with the finance department extensively to go over the finances of the solid waste funds specifically to address the, the current climate of COVID-19 to, to ensure that making the rate adjustment is the right move going on to year two before we even brought this forth to the city council. Ultimately, after review of the solid waste divisions, financial health, without adjusting the solid waste rate to the pre-approved year number two rate, we would be running, we would be running into about almost a half million dollar deficit at, at the end of the year without any kind of replenishment of our aged equipment on that. So to answer your question, the short answer to your question is, yes, we did do a financial review of the solid waste operations and the funds to ensure that moving on, moving forward with the approved year number two rate was the right call for the operations and, of course, for the citizens. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not upset about having a rate increase that you have, but just, I'm, I'm just worried the percentage that we get too much money like the building official, like the permit for building department. Their increase, no, no, I understand. Let me, let me finish. I understand where we're coming from, but at the same time, we're coming so fast at the building department for new homes and construction and the permits for, to get these permitting, you know, for the, it's, now we're gonna have to give them $1,000 back and still we're gonna have to build City Hall and we're just barely gonna get rid of that money.
Yes, sir.
But I just, I just don't want us to have the same problem for this department here or any of the departments. I want to just, so we can watch at the same time, every six months or so, start looking and see if that money, if it starts growing so fast that we can't, don't know what to do with it, and we can only spend it in that one department. We need to be able to move that money or spend it quickly or lower, give some kind of a break to the citizens.
Yeah, yes, sir. So
That's where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir. So just to reiterate, right before the year number two fee adjustment, we did do the financial health review and actually right before, during, right, right before this meeting, I was having discussion with finance to ensure that, like giving them, letting them know that each year prior to a rate adjustment that we will be sitting down to do that financial, financial review prior to any kind of rate adjustments, whether it's, whether it's an adjustment up, whether it's adjustment down, or whether it's a status quo, we will be making sure that we do that financial review. Along with the solid waste impact fee that we have that's been implemented, we're making sure that the right money, the money that's being collected from the solid, solid waste impact fees is going towards being able to pay towards those items that it's allocated for. So, you know, the rate adjustments won't be paying for, for items like that. But I understood, sir.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Go ahead. I just want you to, you know, be a, a good steward, the, the citizens of the, of their money. That's what I'm trying to take care of it.
Yes, sir.
Bill, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I just want to let the council know as monthly, myself, deputy city manager, finance director, deputy finance, we had to do a budget performance meeting. So we are monitoring the budget very closely. Secondly, the solid waste is an enterprise fund, so it's run like a business. It's not under the same statutory requirements as the building fund. That's under strict statutory guidelines. We're allowed to keep a balance and a certain amount. So it's a little bit apples and oranges comparison, but we are monitoring that. Several years ago, our solid waste division was in the red. We were able to cover it through contingency funds. But if you recall, Wright Pearson did a comprehensive study and made the recommendation. I think we went back several times and picked option two or three. I don't remember.
Option three, sir.
Option three, which kind of lays out where we're at tonight. So I just want to let you know that we're doing our budget performance meetings once a month to make sure this doesn't get away from us.
Right. And that's, that's all I'm asking for. That's not a problem. As long as you, as long as you keep it, keep it in, in tow.
Understood, sir. May I, pal?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number F, Mr. Trace, Councilor Trace?
I, I just had a question because it's a continuing contract for these, these playfields. Is it just for, I think during our discussion earlier, it was just for like spare parts and, and small things, not for anything?
No, sir. It's for repair services. 90% of our cost right now under this contract are for repair services.
Okay. I just want to make sure, like, if we did another Virginia, you know, playground like that, that goes out to bid and we go through
Yes, it'd have to come back to council. It'd be over my authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Trace, Mr. Trace, Mr.?
Mr. Cooper, you want to speak on item G?
No, just on F. I'm still, where Mr. Trace was at. We're gonna, we're gonna go piggyback this deal here. And of course, Mr. Sturgeon and I, we talked about that again. And I, I'm still at the same place. The citizens should get the best bang for the buck that they can. And it doesn't take that long to put out a, a formal bid. And if you want to do these piggybacks, that's fine, but at least throw the bid out for the bone for the people that are right here in the city of Saint Cloud or Kissimmee close that are working here instead of going to Orlando or BFE and just taking a piggyback because it's easy and we don't have to do the, the work that it takes. I understand where you're gonna come from, but at the same time, I'm trying I understand where you're gonna come from, but at the same time, I'm trying to make sure, it, it, it can't take that long to put a RFQ out for, RFP, to get it done.
Mr. Sturgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just did some research, Mr. Cooper, and just wanna give you, just on that specific resolution, 2020, 2095R, the Clay County Agreement that we were piggybacking has gone through the public procurement process. It was posted locally for 10 days and nobody responded and like I said, ninety percent of our cost are rep services or for repairs. Utilizing the Clay County Agreement, we received discounted pricing and utilized by four other agencies and the vendors located in Lake Mary. So again, it's been through the public procurement process, it was posted as required by, by statute and by our procurement policy. And I did some other research, I just had Leslie do a few things. Um, as far as, you know, staff time for an RFP, RFQ, it's up to 100 hours. If it's a federal grant, you can add 30 hours to that, multi-award, 30 hours, large market, 22 hours, so an estimated hours for an RFQ, RFP is up to 182 hours. Our average cost of our, uh, staff is $41 an hour. If you start doing that, you know, we did that several months back, we did the vehicles, saved about 17, $18,000, but if you add the staff time, I mean, I don't know, I think it was cost neutral. But like I said, we are, it, it, everything goes out to bid and goes through a public procurement process.
Thank you. I'm ready for item G.
Which one? G, I'm sorry. Bill, all I'm, all I'm saying was on that, that item was just basically if there is a chance to get a citizen that is, has a business in town here or in the city of Kissimmee that we can give them some of the, the fruits of the, the money, then I would say, let's try and do that. If it doesn't take that long and you can get it done, I think that's just no, no rocket science that, to do that.
Yes, sir, and I, and I agree, and we went back, if you recall, part of the stimulus package is we enact, we reenacted the local government preference for procurement. And so we are, we are reaching out to the businesses locally that can provide those services.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Item G.
Yes, sir. I just wanna ask some questions about this, it looks like, um, we're gonna go to Song and Associates to do the, uh, architecture. I thought we have architect in-house that we did some of the preliminary already. Why are they not gonna go ahead and do it now? Our own employees that we've got? If, you, you tell me they can't do it, or?
He, he doesn't have the technical expertise for commercial.
Okay. So, in other words, all the, all of the drawings and things that is specifically, he can only do just portions of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright, well that was the question. I just kinda wondered, it was like, how come we're having to do somebody to go in, in, out, out of the realm of the city and get somebody else to do it, but we've already got somebody that I thought we had, could do it. So that was a question there, so appreciate that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Trace.
Councilor Trace. And in the proposal, I saw that there had already been some renderings put together and maybe some layouts, if you could email those, I don't, I don't think I've seen anything.
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
Okay, and then, um, I didn't see it as part of the scope, but I was like through each phase of design, putting together cost estimates for everything, just to make sure that, you know, the scope kinda gets in line with where the budget is, uh, for any, any construction project like that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item I.
Well, if I can, I'm still, I'm not, Mr. Mayor, let me finish up real quick, one last thing. This, um, for City Hall, Mr. Sturgeon, you and I had talked about maybe putting an annex on the east or west side instead of putting it into the front, you and I had had some discussions about that. And you started talking about on the third floor, if we leave it like it is now, on the third floor, and you were starting talking about the dais and you were gonna get ready to get started on it and move forward. And I said, whoa, wait a minute, we're gonna go up there three stories and what are you gonna put up on the third floor? Maybe you need to expand the size of the dais and some of the layout on that, have you, have we? I mean, you were getting ready to do the dais, May, June? Maybe we need to slow that down a little bit until you find out what you're gonna, let's get it drawing from A to Z, from first to third floor. Let's get the third floor finished up and know exactly what you want, especially the dais, if you're gonna change it, move it, put it into the different position. I mean, if you're gonna take down the dais that's there now, you're gonna spend quarter million dollars right now, three or four months from now, let's hold off until you get ready to go, go with the whole entire entirety and do it at one time. It just, it's rocket science to me, just do it all at one time. Does that sound legitimate?
You know, well, I, I get what you're saying, uh, you know, I think it's prudent to do construction projects simultaneously and make sure the new design fits with what we're trying to do in the chambers.
Right.
And, you know, the reason we're doing that is for, you know, ADA purposes, additional electronic equipment, to have the podium where we don't have to spin it around during a meeting and, and, you know, quite frankly, so you guys can see each other, the way it is right now, it's kinda difficult.
Well, Mr. Trace is in a little cubicle, he can hardly turn around backwards or whatever and, you know, I think it, if you're gonna go up there third floor, move a couple of those cubicles and make them a little, little larger and he can, at least, at least could sit down and see himself backwards.
You're advocating in bigger offices for council members, is that what I'm hearing?
That's kinda what I was saying, if, if you're gonna, if you're gonna add out to the front, which would be to the south, from A to, from A to the B side across, and you're gonna go up there third floor. If you're gonna have all that excess space in the third floor and you're gonna move part of your, your dais and everything there, you could stretch or move that, those four other council members could move them a little larger or move them over. Just a thought process, I don't think we've even thought about it until now, but at least you ought to look before you start jumping and saying, okay, we're gonna do that.
Mr. Cooper, I think part of the, part of the issue is the building funds have to be used for those building improvements, so you can't really expand other portions of the building for other uses with those funds, so, I think it has to be.
The drawings, the drawings look like it's gonna be three stories.
Oh, I just haven't, I haven't seen the drawings, so.
I have, I've got the call, the copy of, so it looks like it, am I right, Bill, it's gonna go?
I thought we did provide the, at least the concept, what the outside would look like.
Yes, it's gonna go up three stories.
To anybody, 'cause I don't think they've been drafted yet. We just had the renderings of the outside, what it would look like.
Right, and it, and it appears to me that it looks like it's gonna be three story.
Again, and it is, and, and most of that will be used for the building department, that expansion, it, like I said, the money's.
First, second, and third?
Well, the first is the reception area, the second and third would be building department.
You're gonna move the whole nine yards of everything.
Yes, sir, and expand community development services also.
And you and I talked about how difficult this is gonna be able to get into A side and B side, 'cause you're gonna only have one, one in, in, and ingress and egress is just one, one doors, double doors coming in and out.
It'll meet the building code and the fire code, we'll make sure there's egress and exits for emergency exit, but the, one of the challenges at City Hall right now, and we just had a outside consultant do a security analysis, is we have a security issue in the building and gentleman said earlier, it is crazy times right now and, and my job is not only protecting my employees, but to protect this council and the public from any kinds of, uh, security issues. And so now we have the funds to do that, I'd recommend we move forward with that.
Let me ask the last question on that one and I'll let it go. The, I went over to Kissimmee to the building official over there in Kissimmee and I asked the questions and I said, we just found out in the last week or week and a half ago that we need to do something with this money, and I said, did you all just find out too? No, Mr. Cooper, we found out about February, February or May? March or April, and I said, wow, we didn't find out until just two or three weeks ago, so how come we didn't have as much leeway to find out that we had to spend that money and we had?
Well, we did, and we were looking for projects to do that on, like I said, very restricted, we've convened several times trying to find additional projects and we're gonna continue to convene to find additional projects because like I said, the money is very restricted and that, and, you know, you can't use it on a lot of things, but we're still trying to spend that money down.
Yeah, we did, okay. Well, it just, it just felt like we were getting behind the eight ball and we've got to do it right now as quickly as we can. But the city of Kissimmee has had probably six or eight months now, they've got their drawings, they're ready to go bing bang boom and they know what they wanna, wanna do, we're in the process of, well, we wanna do this, we're gonna do that, change this, so.
It's a, it's a unique, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's a unique problem to have money that we have to spend.
I know it is.
And, you know, being a good steward of the citizens' money, I'm a budget hound and I wanna make sure that we spend the money the right way. And it's been a difficult switch for me to go to, now we have to spend money.
Well, you definitely don't wanna give it back to the, to
No.
you know, to the contractors, uh, you know.
And I've had discussions with each council member and it's very clear, you know, that we're gonna move forward with the, some projects.
Yes, understand that, okay. Alright, what's the next one?
Mayor, can I have, be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
I also have, um, for this item, item G, an email from Hewett Crumpler to read into the record.
Okay, would you do so at this time?
Hewett Crumpler, Michigan Avenue, item G on consent agenda. While it may be legal to take this action and spend $237,465 on a task authorization, I do not believe it is an appropriate action. This task should be out, put out to bid. As I understand, the design drawings that result from this task will be used to build a multimillion dollar expansion of City Hall. Who decided on this approach design? I think something of this significance should have citizen input early in the process and the citizens and city council should be presented with several design options and objectives on how to spend the multimillion dollar money in the building fund. There are several ideas which could be considered, for example, building a multi-level garage, which would also house the building department, just one idea. Also, why is such an important item put on the consent agenda? It is certainly not routine or non-controversial. Spending $237,465, which will result in a single design for a multimillion dollar project, does not make sense. The council would just be rubber stamping a single design. It seems at best, they and citizens should be given the opportunity to suggest relatively minor tweaks to a predetermined design approach. This illustrates the need for and importance of real and timely transparency. Please put this work out to bid and allow other design solutions. Also, explain the timeline and the restrictions on how the money in the building fund must be spent.
Hello? Is there anything that you wanna speak to?
You might have to help me on this, Linda. First off, it has but put out to bid. Song and Associates is one of our continuing contract services and it does go out to bid. Secondly, we did include the, uh, council several weeks ago on this concept and throughout the process, you're gonna get to see the plans at, you know, at certain levels throughout and get plenty of input as well as the citizens. The third, I'm gonna answer it like this, you know, you guys hired me to be the city manager and my job is to make recommendations to this council. I've been overruled several times, that's fine, that's what your job is, your job is to be steward of the money and to guide the policies of this city. So we've made a recommendation based on those building fund requirements, which says we cannot carry any more than four years, our operational costs in our reserves, and we've hit that number. And we're gonna continue to hit that number, we're gonna have to continue to find projects that one, are legally and number two permissible, according to that statute. Help me out a little bit more. And for transparency, it's in the agenda, you know, I, you know, it's, it's a little disheartening sometimes that this council's accused of that all the time, that you're not transparent. I know all of you, you're very transparent, very open with me and with the public and always available for phone calls, so I just wanna say thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Are you through, Mr. Cooper?
Uh, yes, sir.
Go to item I.
Yes, sir, um, the bike, bike path, bikeway on Florida Avenue. I think that Mr. John Rollis had said something in the last meeting and he was kind of a, very avid about going towards Ohio Avenue instead of Florida Avenue. It was wider, they, almost, all you have to do is stripe it, stripe it and it's there on the sides. Ohio Avenue is that much wider. There's nothing that would almost have to be even be done. I don't know how much work is gonna be entailed to Florida Avenue, but this, if we're gonna have to start tearing out curbs and pave some concrete down there, asphalt or whatever for a bicycle path. Am I wrong, missing the boat, or tell me?
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, your ma'am.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was talking to you.
Toastmasters meeting, I guess I get to speak. Mr. Cooper, the, if we go back in, in 2017, we passed the Envision St. Cloud Plan and, and part of that master plan was to link the, the downtown with the lakefront along Florida, and Florida Avenue, as you know, as a long-term citizen of St. Cloud, that is the grand entrance to the lakefront, that's what it was designed for. I've talked to Mr. Rollis and we did have an agreement in place that we were gonna meet and I was gonna show him the plans and the options and, and that never transpired, I did try to reach out to him several times today, but you know, him and I did speak and, and I think he's got some misinformation. Admittedly, uh, we went out and provided, um, information to the public through the electronic means and through social media and everybody doesn't do that, so we're gonna re-go back and redo that public meeting and really get that input to find out, I still support it going down Florida Avenue. Main Street supports it going down Florida Avenue, a lot of our businesses do. And, and I also wanna say that, you know, if you look at Florida Avenue, one of the things that's a misnomer is we're gonna cut down all the trees, that's not true. The second thing is if you remember on both sides of the road, the city owns right of way, so there's gonna be plenty of room for a multi-modal trail, is what it's known, it was actually mislabeled as a bike trail, it's not only for bikes, it's gonna be for walking scooters. You know, I'm talking about the kind you push, not electric, I'm not paying those. But, you know, so that's what we're doing, we're trying to really drive that economic impact by being able to link the, the lakefront with the downtown.
Yeah, I think you told me that we're not gonna take those trees down and.
No, I mean, we're a tree city, that doesn't make sense.
No, sir. Okay. Alright. And item P?
Item N. I just want that voted on separately, item N.
Yes.
You say N, Mike, Mr. Trace?
N as in Nancy.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Go right ahead, Trace.
I just want it voted on separately. I'm gonna abstain from, uh, voting on item N.
P was the same thing, I wanted to vote separately on that one.
And, Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify, so Mr. Trace has a conflict with regard to item number N, so he will not be voting on that item, that's why, just wanna make sure he understands that and he will, he will follow the, the requirements of the law with regard to his conflict. And Mr. Cooper, did you ask that item P be pulled for a separate vote also?
Yes, P.
Do you have anything else on item P at this point?
No, sir, just a, a special vote, that's all. The last question was R. Uh, it looks like we've finally got somebody that's gonna go ahead and do it and it's gonna take two months and you're gonna, two months from now, you're gonna be ready to dig in the ground and let's put some sound system, right?
It's my understanding that the contractor should have the work completed by the end of February.
Okay.
And we can go listen to music downtown.
I'll hold you, I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire, that's all. I'm glad to see that you're gonna get it, finally get started, so that's not a problem, took a, almost a year, but hey, it's getting it done. I'm gonna make sure.
Bring us back to item N. We have requests to vote on this item separately, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, a second from Councilmember Matheny, and Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
I'd like to abstain. I have a voting conflict. My wife's marketing firm has a contract with one of the interlocal agreement agencies, and I'll file the paperwork with you.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero, one abstention.
Motion to approve.
I have a second, B. I have a motion from Councilmember Askew.
I missed what just happened.
What, is that item P?
Item P.
P, P.
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
No.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? If not, do I have a motion for the adoption of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Askew, is that correct?
Yes.
And a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
That brings us to public hearings. Item number one.
Final public hearing for ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating abandonment of a right-of-way located, located adjacent to thirty-one thirteen Fourth Street. North of Fifth Street, east of Columbia Avenue, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for survivability conflicts and effective date.
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is the public hearing for the abandonment of a right-of-way that is south of Fourth Street. It's north of Fifth Street, east of Columbia, and the applicant is requesting the full width of the abandoned easement. And per Florida statute, the city must provide equal interest in the abandoned easement. And you recall the last meeting, we had issued a condition that the applicant provide a notarized affidavit indicating that the property owner on the west had no interest, and that it will be provided a hundred percent to the applicant. However, we are not able to do that through this mean, this method. Therefore, fifty percent will be provided to each property owner, and then that property owner at some future point has the option to do a quitclaim deed or some other instrument to transfer that property to the applicant. So that's a matter that they can handle separately from this meeting. There are no city, public infrastructure utilizing this easement, this right-of-way. And DRC reviewed it, had no objection, they had no letters of objections for this item. This is the image that shows the right-of-way that's in question. And it's consistent with our infrastructure strategic plan goal. And staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-two, and asks that the city council also approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-two.
Is the applicant wanting to speak to this item? Need to step to the microphone before you speak, please. Need to share your name and your address.
David Woods, thirty-one thirteen Fourth Street, St. Cloud. This affidavit, okay, not good. Okay.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second? Second, Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
I just have a question after.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
No.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one.
Brings us to item number two. Madam Clerk?
Final public hearing for ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty-three. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, closing vacating abandoning portions of utility easement located, located at seventeen twenty-one Caroline Court, east of Missouri Avenue and north of East Clinton Drive, specifically described in the body of this ordinance, providing for survivability conflicts and effective date.
Seems our image is missing. However, this is an abandonment of easement for property that's on Caroline Court. It's within a sub, existing subdivision. It's located east of Clinton Drive and east of Missouri Avenue. There are no city, public infrastructure utilizing the easement at this time. At the last meeting, the council talked about reducing the, the abandonment of that easement to five feet, which is required anyway for accessory structures. Letters were sent to affected parties, and no letters of objections were received, and there are no conditions that would apply to this item. Strategic plan goal consistent, consistent with the infrastructure strategic goal. And as, again, there's, there's the motion that was made at the council meeting on the twelfth regarding a five-foot setback rather than the entire easement being abandoned. And staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-three, and asks that the city council also approve the ordinance with the condition that you had indicated at the first reading.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? We'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second, Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number three, Madam Clerk?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty-four. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, rezoning ten point twenty-three plus minus acres identified as preserved at Lakeside from PUD planned unit development to R one B, single-family dwelling. Compatible with low-density residential future land use designation located north of East Ten Street and east of Whistler Court, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map. Map finding and planning recommendations, proof of, planning commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, survivability and effective date.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. This is rezoning of a piece of property that was previously approved as Lakeside Village. And they are requesting a change from planned unit development to R one B. The reason for this was the property was purchased by another individual, and they are not in, designed to develop the project for the thirty-plus units, and so want to develop it as R one B, which requires a minimum sixty-two and a half foot wide lots, approximately ten lots for this project, if it does come back in the future. The proposed zoning, again, it would be R one B. It's compatible with this surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. It's consistent with the strategic plan goal for growth management. Staff recommends approval of two thousand twenty, ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four. Planning Commission at their meeting on November seventeenth also recommends approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four based on the sixteen findings of Land Development Code. City Council, we ask that you also approve the ordinance two thousand twenty dash thirty-four.
Is the applicant or anyone in the audience wanting to speak to this item? Please step forward, share your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Crawford with Florida Engineering Group, and I'm here to represent the applicant, and actually, I'm just here to go and answer any questions that the city council might have.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council.
So move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper?
Second.
Second, for Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to items four, five, and six. Could you read all three of those, please?
First public hearing introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-seven. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately three point fifty-three acres identified as Big Sky Storage Development. Located east of Big Sky Boulevard and north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seven one point zero four four Florida statutes. First public hearing introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of commercial to approximately five point fifty-three acres identified as Big Sky Storage. Located east of Big Sky Boulevard and north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for amending the official future land use map of the planning commission's filings and filings of the planning commission's recommendations and proof of publication, availability and effect, survivability copies on file and effective date. First public hearing introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-nine. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of highway business compatible with commercial future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-eight for approximately three point fifty-three acres identified as Big Sky Storage. Development located east of Big Sky Boulevard, north of east Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map. Finding of the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, survivability and effective date.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Again, I apologize, the image is missing. But I think it's in your packet, so you should have the image for this annexation. This annexation request is to annex into the city limits three, three point five, three acres. It's located by Big Sky Boulevard and US one ninety-two. It is consistent with the requirements of Florida statute one seventy-one point zero four four, as it is contiguous and reasonably compact, and we have received a sign petition from the property owners. It's adjacent to the city limits, therefore it is eligible. The existing land use for, within the county is commercial, and existing zoning in the county is commercial tourist. It's compatible with the surrounding area, and there are no adverse impacts currently to city facilities. It's consistent with our growth management strategic goal. And staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-seven, and the planning commission at their meeting in October twentieth recommended approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-seven based on the sixteen findings in the Land Development Code. And we ask that the city council also recommend approval of the annexation of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-seven. I believe the applicant may be here. Moving along to the next item, which is a future land use amendment for the same property. Again, the commercial, the land use in the county is commercial. The proposed future land use in the city would also be commercial. It is compatible with the surrounding area, and there would be no adverse impacts to city facilities at this time. It's, again, consistent with our strategic plan goal for growth management. And staff recommends approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-eight. And the planning commission at their meeting on October twentieth also recommended approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-eight based on the sixteen findings in the Land Development Code, and asks that the city council also approve orders two thousand twenty dash twenty-eight. The final component is a zoning map amendment, and this request is to go from existing zoning of CT commercial, commercial tourist, to highway business within the city limits of St. Cloud. Future land use is commercial for the county, and the land use in the city would be also commercial. It is compatible. I must point out that based, well, there's no adverse impacts at this time, and it's consistent with the strategic plan goal. Based on the actions that the council took tonight with direction on the corridor, this condition that was applied is no longer applicable because you have now indicated that we will be approving uses until we have, at such time that we have adopted the overlay district that restricts uses that are within three hundred feet of the right-of-way. So therefore, staff will, I guess, need to amend our recommendation since there is no restriction on uses within US one ninety-two at this time. The planning commission at their meeting recommended approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine, and now we ask that the council approve ordinance two thousand twenty dash twenty-nine without any conditions. The applicant is here and is, is wanting to make a presentation.
Would the applicant like to step forward at this time?
Hi there, I'm Jonathan Martin with Kimley Horn Associates. I'm the engineer on the project. My address is one eighty-nine South Orange Avenue, Orlando, Florida, suite one thousand, three two eight oh one. Yes, thank you. One of the things that, you know, we looked at this property at the early in the year, we were going through the county, and then we bought the property in March. Had a pre-op with staff, and some of the things that I heard in the, the gentleman earlier spoke of, we kind of want to talk about, about the form and how things are done, and, and even just notifying the property owners that there is such a substantial change. So I kind of wanted to walk through the property tonight, and I may go a little bit quicker just because of the actions you took previous, you know, earlier tonight. But this is kind of the team. The owner bought the land, is actually the owner. We want to do a really high-class storage facility at this, at this intersection. We looked at all the different components from traffic to landscaping to architecture, and things that we really feel will be an improvement for the area. It's about three and a half acres, suitable for commercial. A lot of things are, you know, just like we've mentioned, the city is really budding, and there's a lot of opportunity happening in this area. Again, we, I think the staff did a great job explaining what the existing zoning and land uses are in the county, and the fact that we found it appealing to get utility services and actually annex into the city. So we're in this process. We had a pre-op, and there was great discussion about form and quality of the product, and maybe enhanced architecture. And really, that's where I thought, when we heard about this overlay coming, it was more about how you do something, but not necessarily what you prohibit or, or what you deny in this area. And again, I think that the, the open discussion, inviting the property owners and having a charrette and talking through all these ideas, is, it was great to hear that tonight, that that's going to go forward through this process. So our goal was, at that time, was, man, no, we feel good about it, our, our architecture, we feel good about the product. We even feel good about the orientation of the building and how it's going to be perceived by the public. We were happy in the county, we're a little happier in the city. So one of those things tonight was to, to kind of come to conclusion on that. There is, you know, insufficient market in this area for storage, especially with all the new homes, and the size of the homes, as we're seeing that in consolidation. So this is a true need in the community. And it's, it's important. We are, you know, more and more, you know, we, not hoard, but you know, Christmas decorations, things like that, you don't really want to have around all year, and, and, and a storage is really important use. It's a big investment. It's a ten million dollar investment. And it's really done by leaders in the industry on, on how to do storage facilities. We looked at, you know, fortified full-time positions from impact fees we talked about earlier, that, that will help improve the quality of life and, and the level of service the city is able to provide, from taxes to annual property taxes. These are all positives for a vacant lot that's been vacant, you know, for as long as I've been doing civil engineering for twenty-six years. The traffic, at the P and Z, there was a common concern about traffic. The one neat thing about storage, it's a very low traffic generator. We're about fifteen percent, in, in, in my professional opinion. I normally can do about ten thousand square feet of commercial per acre, so it's a tremendous, it's a, it's a tremendous reduction in traffic than what would be there with a, maybe a little strip center, or maybe, you know, a, a different use. So we just wanted to point out that there was concern about the church and things across the street. This is one of the least impactful traffic uses you could put on this property. And we submitted a traffic report to, to back that up, signed and sealed by, by a professional engineer. But you can see, the, the total daily trips is about fifteen percent, AMs thirty-five, and then the peak PMs about fifteen, eighty-five percent reduction, as we said. It's a positive effect on traffic, this kind of use. We went and looked at the site and how we could orientate it. I guess we're having glitches too. We had a site plan, but it really was orientating the entrance to the building, and I'll show you in a picture later on, that it's going to be focused on the interior side and not the exterior of the project. We plan on doing a screen wall of this type along the whole northern edge to help, you know, separate our neighbors. We're going to increase landscaping, increase the buffers, a lot of positive things that were happening, and these are some of the things that we were proposing compared to code now and the permitted use that we were planning on doing anyways as part of this project. The proposed building, again, a lot of thought went into, but as I drove here for the P and Z meeting, you know, I was looking at the Orlando Health Architecture and how, it seems like everyone. This is the, the product that we're proposing here. This is a four-story product. We'd only be three-story, but this would be the interior view from like inside the, the development. Seems like every other slide is showing, so. I, fortunately, I brought hard copy, so I will hand it all out. I, fortunately, I brought hard copy, so I will hand it all out. Wait till y'all get it. We'll start in the first Orlando Health slide. You never know when technology's going to give up on us, so it's good that I brought our copies. Again, starting in that slide, once you all are ready.
Can I stop you and ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
When did you print this?
We printed that last Wednesday.
Couldn't have got it to us a little quicker than today, right now?
We submitted to the city last Wednesday. Well, we provided a PDF, this is a copy, what's the PDF version, sir? Since the technology failed, I made a backup hard copy for you to have.
All right, not a problem.
It's in the package.
All right, I understand, thank you.
Very good. So going back to this slide, so when we drove through the city even earlier, we saw this building being produced. And we go to the next page, it's a very nice architectural building. So we said, well, we felt very high and from we heard in the pre-op that it was going to be a building of higher standard and higher quality. So this is the building that we're actually proposing. You can see the interior entrance, very nice product. Again, this is a four-story product, we'd be going with three-story here. But this is the actual proposed building as we go through the next couple of slides. And this would be the interior entrance as we get to the next one. That's going to be the actual entrance into the interior where the, you know, where you'd be able to load and unload things. We also provided some other alternate concepts. This one was done in celebration where, you know, we can go with a different architectural style. And we would partner with the city if that was a true concern of the actual architecture. We were proposing the first one, but you can flip through these. I think that in some cases, it looks like an office building or it looks like a, even a retail space. And the third alternate concept was another one that we've done. That we just wanted to show that it can be done in a very tasteful and formful way that I think represents some of the concerns you had as far as the architecture and how inviting it is in the city. The next couple of slides are more the conventional self-storage slides. And I know, I think that's probably maybe where the concern came. I think that it's an older style and technique. Things are being done a little bit different now as you go to the next page. And we understand that that may not be appealing in all areas of the city. And maybe it should be somewhere else that's more industrial, whatever. But we feel the product that we're proposing here, I think it goes back to what we were saying. Like that ordinance needs to provide flexibility for y'all to make sound decisions about uses and what should be a great, you know, maybe the use isn't as concerned of how it's being, of how it's being presented. Again, this is kind of the older, kind of ugly, what maybe the perception was of, of a notwithstanding gentleman.
He's still here today.
A great presentation he talked through earlier. So ultimately, the architecture that we're proposing, this is kind of the front view of what will be presented towards the 192 corridor. It's the last slide. And, you know, again, I think we'll be very proud of this building once it's constructed. And I think the city would be happy. We, you know, a couple, maybe a week before, we talked about the overlay. We asked for a copy of the ordinance, but the ordinance is not available. We still even asked for a copy of the ordinance today and it's still not available. But we were made aware the day of, the day before of our last city council meeting, which was going to be November 11th, 12th. We were notified about this overlay that, well, we're coming into the city, but you're not going to be allowed what you're trying to do. And we're like, what? Really? And so we said, we asked for a meeting, staff's been very good, they've been very, working with us. We had design shreds, we talked through things and they recommended we make a presentation tonight. We would have been submitting construction drawings tomorrow. We haven't ready. If we would have got a, you know, November 12th first reading, this would have been our second reading. So I think the important part is that this is really our first reading. This is what we're proposing to do and you can see the quality of our project. And we plan on, if approved at this meeting and if approved, the annexation zoning in January, then we would be presenting construction drawings the day after. If for some reason, this isn't the kind of product or quality product that you guys wanted the city, then we request that you deny us and that we can stick with the county and process through their, through their system. We want to move into the city, it's something that we want to be part of St. Cloud. And we want to pay tax base in St. Cloud. But it just was kind of a concern, you know, that the day before really being, really understanding that it was going to be a prohibition, not an enhanced architecture, enhanced landscaping. But that's pretty much it. I think I went through all the, all the major points. And if, absolutely here to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak to the sign? If not, then we'll have discussion or Mr. Andre?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. I just want to clarify for the record that we held a pre-application meeting on this item back in May 29th of this year. And at that meeting, it was provided to the applicant, the information that he indicated that we did not provide, which is an indication of the proposed major corridors overlay ordinance. We reviewed our recording of that meeting and it was on the record. So I just want to clarify the record. However, it's still a moot point because we're not enforcing that requirement. I just wanted to correct the record.
Thank you. Yeah, discussion by council. Councilmember Trace?
Couple of questions since we got a whole bunch of information. Building two and building three, are those single-story buildings or are those multi-story?
All three buildings, all three prototypes are all three-story buildings.
Okay, even the smaller ones again?
Yes.
All three-story buildings.
If I can also add to the comments that were just made. We asked for if there was an audio recording of that pre-op. I wasn't present at that meeting, so we were going off meeting minutes notes. But we did ask for audio recording and it said it was, and the staff told us it was not available.
Okay. Mr. Trace?
And then just, maybe it's part of this overlay once it actually happens. But cross-access between commercial uses along 192 would be nice for some of these as they're moving forward to where connectivity to major intersections kind of, kind of helps as well.
It makes a lot of sense. We have a billboard out in front, that's something that we have to work with geometrically. But, but, you know, we understand, we understand the, you know, the opportunities that cross-access provide. There are some security concerns too, so it has to be done right, but, but understand that.
Yeah, it's nice part of those three-story buildings is you almost secure the entire building, not the entire campus, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have any other discussion from council?
I, I have a question.
Councilmember Matheny?
Andre, I have a question for you. The properties. The properties, property north of the project site, is that residential? Yeah, I'm just curious, because Big Sky Boulevard leads back to homes, correct?
Yes.
And so then, I just want to make sure that if we move forward with this, that it has appropriate screening, you know, for, and look at the lights and things like that, so that we're not blasting homes with lighting and...
That is part of our standard review, in order to ensure that any use that's non-residential is, provides adequate buffer to residential uses.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just want to make sure we're aware of the community out there and, you know, being good neighbors.
Yeah. Do we have further discussion? In regard to the first item on annexation, ordinance number 2020-27, what is the pleasure of the council?
Did we do public comment? Sorry.
Yes, I did.
Okay, sure. Motion to approve ordinance number 2020-27?
I'll second it, but I wanted to add something to it, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
And I, and this might not be the one, but I like to get it out there right out of the gate so that there's nobody, but I'd like it to be in substantial conformance with the, what did they call it in here? The conceptual architecture that's shown in here, just to make sure that, you know. Because what they show in here is, is nice looking, so just make sure it's in substantial conformance with that in the approval.
Are you fine with that in the zoning?
I think that's where it would be most appropriate in the zoning.
I just want to put it in there before, like, then we get three in and then somebody says no and then my votes would have been different.
Yep. Okay, so that'll come up in the zoning issue. Any other discussion at this point? We have a motion from Councilmember Trace. And we have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number five, ordinance number 2020-28. What's the pleasure of the council?
So moved.
Have a motion for Councilmember Cooper. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Have a second, Councilmember Trace? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number six, ordinance number 2020-29.
I'll make a motion to approve and to put into the approval that the building design will be in substantial conformance with the conceptual architecture that's contained in the package that's given to us in the council meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny with the provisions that she just stated. And a second from Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And just mayor and council, we will make sure that that language is, this is first reading, so we'll make sure that language is in the, before it comes back, so you'll be able to see it.
Thank you very much. We look forward to you living up to your promises on all of this design and architectural design. And we look forward to a brand-new storage product in our city.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk brings us to item number seven.
Resolution number 2020-286R. A resolution of the city council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, and then the resolution number 2020-215R, which adopted the fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget for the City of St. Cloud. Finding the city manager has certified their prior year fund balances and or current revenues available in the budget. For additional projects and programs in the various funds not included in the original 2020, 2021 budget. Requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding with various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Ms. Colazo?
Good evening, Council, Wendy Colazo, Finance Director. Let me get the slide up for you here. This is the presentation of Budget Amendment One for Fiscal Year 2021. As per City Code Section 2212, these are amendments after adoption of the fiscal year. This is to certify that the city manager has certified these funds and are available for appropriate funding. This budget amendment meets all of the city's strategic plan goals for financial sustainability. Again, this is resolution number 2020-286R. Overall, in the general fund, I'll be presenting 15 line items, which total a $186,137 increase. This is in your memorandum and the highlight and summary is in front of you in the presentation. $3,500 with the revenue of donation to public safety is being recognized in order for the shop with a cop program. These are funds for the donation to Walmart Incorporated. Donations from the Osceola County Hundred Club made in August of 2020 are being recognized for $13,000. These will be used for operating supplies, uniforms, training and travel. In the general fund, again, $144,491 is being recognized in federal grants for public safety in reference to the 2020 FDLE coronavirus emergency supplemental funding. This is the CESF. Of those, $71,901 will be allocated in the following three categories of expenditures. The first one to machinery and equipment. $20,990 to operating supplies and $51,600 to machinery, again, and equipment. Using city council contingency, $100,000 going and expensed towards information technology through other contractual services for temporary administrative support in the positions of receptionist, administrative assistant and other IT technical needs for the support of that department. $68,000 of expense, excuse me, decreased to the city council contingency and allocated to expenditures in the fire department for machine and equipment for replacement of the EMS electronic patient care reporting software. $7,750 of recognition of revenue grants to public safety for the Federal Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program for Fiscal Year 2020. Of those also, we're also decreasing city council contingency for $7,750. Total operating supply and expenditures being allocated of $15,500 for those efforts. $8,860 of revenue grant recognition to public safety for the EMS DOH grant for new intubation cameras, expending off in, for $8,860 in operating supplies. $3,536 of prior year fund balance being increased for the remaining, excuse me, funds for Project Papa Sierra 2008 for the HHS stimulus grant for COVID. $12,000 of city council contingency being decreased and allocated to the expense of human resources under the other contractual services category for the Certificate of Insurance Management Services for a responsibility that was transferred over to that department in fiscal year 2021. $2,000 of council contingency decrease going and allocated towards expense to the finance committee towards printing and binding, operating supplies. This funding was for the finance committee and has been allocated or is trying to be allocated after this budget amendment to the correct cost center. $50,000 of expense council contingency decrease in order to be allocated to the expense of building repairs and maintenance for the joint-use facility, JUF, gate repair. $275,000 for Project Charlie Charlie 2101 for the council chamber upgrade of that $20,000 allocated to professional services and $255,000 allocated to machine and equipment. We're almost there with the general fund, two more. $25,000 decreased to council contingency and allocated to code enforcement for the expense write-off for the moving, excuse me, mowing liens settlement with Vera Atlantic 2 LLC. Finally, in the general fund, recognition of $5,000 in insurance proceeds for a rescue and being allocated to the fire department in the expense category of machinery and equipment. Final item to the general fund, $1 million of intergovernmental transfer out to the stormwater for Project Number Sierra Whiskey 2006. Expense decrease to city council contingency for that amount. Moving your slide. Again, those are the totalities that give you $186,136 increase overall to the general fund. And I should have moved those slides, sorry, as I read for you. In the gas tax fund, $390,000 of total increase. This is using prior year fund balance to establish the additional budget items for the gas tax fund in the categories of street lighting for $320,000, road materials and supplies for $30,000, and other contractual services costs for $40,000. In the St. Cloud OUC and our local fund, $451,000 in totality of increase of revenues and expenditures for the remaining funding of what you know as the economic stimulus plan grants and assistance. We're rolling that forward into funding for 2021. Recreation fee, impact fee, $5,750,000 increase. This is for the, using prior year fund balance to allocate to the expenditures for the purchases of, purchase, excuse me, of Hastings Ranch in January 2021. Correction to that, in the consent agenda of December, closing. Sewer fund, $7,837,000 increase. This is just recognition of insurance proceeds for vehicle ATAC 149. In the stormwater fund, $1,162,000 increase in revenues from prior year fund balance and intergovernmental transfer, sorry, from the general fund. This is increasing expenditures for Project Sierra Whiskey 2005. These two projects being increased is for your Esprit Pond and Sierra Whiskey 2006 for the Illinois Avenue. These two projects being increased is for your Esprit Pond and Si, um, Sierra Whiskey two thousand six for the Illinois Avenue drainage. In the building fund, nine hundred and eight thousand dollar increase. This is an increase again to prior year fund balance for the architect and proposed atrium for the building department, community development reconfiguration, as well as security camera upgrades and a bucket truck. In the solid waste impact fee fund, five hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase. This is to establish a new budget to track the solid waste impact fees. As you are aware, in the fund four forty, we were getting impact fee funds for both residential and commercial. We have created fund four ninety to remove those impact fees and be able to better track them like we do the water and sewer fees. So this is the recognition to that new fund that we're creating. Finally, item twenty-four, in economic development grant, a recognition of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty-eight. These are the recognitions to the CDBG grants, um, three hundred and nineteen thousand and seventy-six to CDBG, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight ninety-eight to CDBG CV, and finally, three hundred and twenty thousand eight eight four for CDBG CV three. That is the presentation of BA number one for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, open to any questions I may answer for you.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the site? If not, we'll have questions, discussion, or motion by council.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second, Councilmember Askew, Madam Clerk.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Brings us to council action, item number one. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash two eighty-five R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to accept and adopt Chisen Park Master Plan dated October thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Good evening, City Council Mayor Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. At this time, we're going to get a presentation for the Chisen Park Master Plan by Keith with, uh, Community Solutions Group.
Good evening, Keith Oropesa with, uh, Community Solutions Group, uh, Director of Land State Architecture. Tonight, we have, uh, the pleasure of me keep going in the right direction, talking about, uh, the Chisen Park Master Plan, the process we went through, and the final, uh, conceptual master plan that we put together. Pardon me, I'm getting used to this. Uh, so we had several tasks that we, we began with. Task number one was the foundation, understanding what the, the land is there, talking with staff, understanding the needs that they would like to see there. We then jumped to task two, which is understanding the public input and, and program verification, and that's about the time the whole COVID thing started to come to light. So we, we switched from what was, uh, in-person type of, um, stakeholder meetings, and we developed, um, web-based, um, input for the public, and we did, did a couple of really great websites and got a lot of feedback from the public, which really gave us good direction. Then we developed with that, uh, three master plans to present, again, to the public in an, in an open forum and a public workshop that was done online. And from that, we were able to take that information and develop that into a, a master plan. All right, so the public engagement had a couple of things going on here. We, we, when we first put this out, we, we gave direction on there. It was open for anyone to come in and, and look and go through it. They were able to make comments on the, the site itself. We had photographs that were tagged there where you could go and look. You didn't have to go to the site, but you could go there and look around, look at the photographs, see what was there, and the public then could tag things that they liked, they didn't like, and make comments about that that we could then pull down and, and, uh, make as part of our, um, our process. This is not going as we would like. We also had a component in there called Dream Park, where we asked if you had your druthers, what would you like to see here? What would be your perfect park? So we had a hundred and forty-eight responses to that and pulled that information down and categorized it. Then we also did a survey where we, specific kind of questions, would you prefer dog parks? Would you prefer, uh, disc golf? All these kinds of components in there. What, uh, what's the demographics? Um, how many kids do you have? Those kinds of things, so we can understand who we're designing for. At the end of the day, we ended up with a, a program that we utilized to begin the, the, uh, the master planning process, which this is what the public came back and said, we'd like multi-use walking trails, picnic opportunities, nature-themed play, fishing piers, native landscaping, educational signage, observation towers, um, an open beach, kayaking or boating rental opportunities, splash pad, dock park, improved parking and restroom facilities improvement. So with that, we developed three conceptual master plans, and we went to the public again, and we presented those master plans. And we, we would ask them questions that was live, and we'd say, what, what would you prefer in this case? Would you like things like rock climbing or, 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 uh, nature-themed type of activity, obstacle courses, whatever it was? And they would, they would vote on those things, and we were taking that live, and we put that together in Survey Monkey, so we could come together and get a whole consensus of what it was like, whether, um, in this case here, you know, parking improvements, boat facility improvements, dog parks in the, inside or outside the park. And we put all that together, and ultimately, of the three master plans, the public preferred concept one, which is where we began then to, uh, put together the final master plan, which this is, let's see if it has the whole, it doesn't show the whole thing on there. But this is the main portion of the park here. Rumel Road would be down at the bottom, which you don't see, but up at the top is Chisen Park Trail. We have a, a dog park, which is up along Chisen Park Trail, which is sort of outside the park proper. We located that across from that retention pond, so we wouldn't have a parking lot across from many homes or anything like that, so there shouldn't be any, any real controversy there. Uh, it's an open grass area right now to begin with. When we come into the park, we decided to split the road and have boat parking on one half and then just vehicular parking, interior park, so we're not mixing those types of uses there, so they don't get in the way of each other. We have a long lineal road coming into the park that skirts along the, the canopy, the beautiful canopy that we want to keep in place there, and comes down towards the retention pond at the bottom. It splits where we could have a drop-off for kayaks, and we could also have a new restroom facility down at the, uh, the, the, the bottom of the park right there with shade pavilions there and additional parking. Now, the main park itself, where you see in the center, we've added splash pads, we've added a rock climbing area to the existing playground area there. So we have sort of, that's the active area right along there, then the rest is the passive, um, uh, picnic area. Along the waterfront, where we have the boat ramp, we've done a promenade that then goes to the beach area with the walk along the beach with, uh, fishing piers and with observation towers. Then these all connect through to the trail system that ultimately comes down towards Rumel Road, where we have a trailhead that ties all the way back to the, um, to, uh, the, uh, lakefront park. This is the idea of some of the quick views that we did of a splash pad with the, uh, the playground in the background. Not everything's coming in again, just like the last live show. So we don't have anything there, folks, I'm sorry. We do have also, we're with this, um, we are connecting this trail with the trail system along Rumel Road, which we're studying right now, to, uh, run, run up Rumel Road and connect over around, um, Heavenly Hooves and cross over and, and have a, a trailhead along the, which will connect the park and take it all the way back down to, uh, to the lakefront park. We estimate the total, um, expenditures at a really high level of around five million dollars. You know, site development is about one point six, architecture, seven point, you know, seven hundred and eighty thousand amenities, five hundred and forty thousand utilities, about a quarter of a million, site furnishings the same, some landscaping and then soft costs for permitting and fees like that. So you're around five million, uh, for the separate here. So I apologize if not all the slides came in for whatever reason. But that is where we ended up, and let me go back to the plan itself, and if you have some questions, I would be happy to entertain. Any questions at this point? I talk kind of fast, so sorry.
How many parking places are provided for in this, and how big an increase is that over what is currently there?
Well, currently, right now, there, there is not formalized parking there. It, it's all grass there, and it's, it's, so, so we didn't do an exact count there. Coming in here, I want to say we added a total of a hundred and thirty, but I, I'd have to go back and recount to be exact in terms of actual car parking. Trailer parking is, is twenty-some plus a few on the turnaround, which, uh, you know, that's, that's what we just did, that space right there.
Were there any proposals to expand the ability to launch, uh, more boats at, uh, on this particular plan?
No, you know, we, we, we did not propose to increase the ramp size or the facilities there. One of the things that, when we looked at it and first came in, and we did not hear that from staff, but also, this is a very rural, calm park, and we didn't want to overload that and, and kill the, the, the effect that is there right now, but we still wanted to make it a little more viable and usable from, from that standpoint in terms of how it's used and make it a little more accessible. We didn't want to overload it in, in that regard. That's not to say that couldn't be looked at, huh?
Uh, I'm just, was just, just asking questions.
Sure.
To me, one of the big issues down at Chisen Park now because, uh, um,
It's full.
It, it just stays full. Parking is a major problem. People line up on both sides all the way down, back and forth when they're having, uh, when the weather's nice and there's ac, activities and, uh, and looking at the access, you know, the drive on both sides is nice, but it looks like to me there ought to be parking on both sides. I'll see it at the end, but, uh,
Oh, on both sides of the road?
Yes.
It could be, we purposely kept it faced towards the park, um, recognizing the open side is also used for other activities such as, um, um, the battle in Arcusian. We were trying to allow that to be, uh, almost an area vendors could set up, that you have there also at the end, and, and not, not bring too much parking in the park. But all that can be added, if we, if we determine we need X number of spaces, which we did not determine in actual, how many we were trying to put in there, we just added space along that, that road coming in.
Councilmember Matheny?
Hi, so I have a few comments.
Sure.
Um, and I did ask Ms. Holcamp, you know, had we had an opportunity to see this before, did I miss it? Because I hate to, to give the comments when we're wanting an approval. So I guess based on what everybody has to say here, I don't know if we procedurally delay the approval and get revisions or, or what we do, but I'll just tell you my comments. So I've taken my nieces and nephews to this park. Um, it's a great park. And the thing that I was always terrified about with them is the proximity of the parking to the park. And, you know, kids are fast and slippery, and, you know, you're just like, ah, where are they? You know, I'm always like, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, where are they?
Yep.
Well, now, we're encircling all of the activity with roads. So for me, as like someone taking kids there, that's a nightmare. You know, because how do I control, you know, they run on that side, well, there's a road over there, but I'm standing over by this road, you know, and then, so I don't like the road on, all around it. So you've got a road on, and they've got a ballpark on this side, and you've got the park on that side, and, you know, you just have a really high possibility of children running across these roads, to me. And then on one of the pictures that didn't come up when you were going through your slides,
Right.
it was a view from, um, where the boats would launch at the splash pad. The splash pad is literally five feet off of the, the road with no barrier, you know, so I, to me, the, uh, being able to take children there and having a relaxing time while you're letting them run and play on the park, that setup to me is like anxiety-ridden. Maybe my nieces and nephews are crazy, but I was always just paranoid, you know, that they'd get on the other side of the park and get out of the park, let alone, you know, get into it.
It's very, very valid and, uh, and reasonable response, and, and a lot of those we, we actually encircle with decorative, uh, type fencing that can contain.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you just, I mean, I just don't know about having the road on both sides and like, you know, hey, you know, you go there. So I've been to that park when my nephew was playing, having football practice. So I'm in the park with her, and then, so he would be dashing across that road to get out to the open field to have his, um, flag football practice. So that, I don't like that. Um, um, I asked a couple of these to, um, staff, so I'm going to slide over it.
Yeah.
This is just a personal preference. I think the graphic of the restroom is, is kind of boring. You know?
There's a couple of, um, that, that, there, there are, there's not a lot showing them, yes.
So it's just like a gray concrete
Yep.
with a metal roof, you know, it's kind of boring. Um, and then to me, it looked like there was a lot of energy, time, investment, money into this boardwalk out into the, the wetland boardwalk that's basically just in this little tiny lake. But it was a lot of money to me, like, I didn't see the bang for the buck in that, like, to build this whole big elaborate boardwalk out into a, a pond.
Bear, bear in mind, not, not an extensive boardwalk there, but it is an educate, that was an educational component, bringing in the native wetlands and species, uh, that, that were being requested. It also was a, a, a more quiet fishing, contained possible fishing space there, and also with the restroom down at that in there. So there was a use beyond just a parking lot and a restroom that we were trying to bring a use in to activate that and tie it back to the whole trail system that's happening there.
Okay. It just seemed like a lot of work to put a observation deck out in the middle of a three-hundred-foot wide pond. To me, like, I would be, I'd rather spend the money elsewhere. And then also in your, in the package that we got in our agenda item, it showed the work that you're doing on the trail on Rumel, and I did forward to the city the plans that, when the county replaced the culvert, um, on Rumel Road, it was designed, it didn't get built with it because there's no trail out there, but it is sized and designed for a ten-foot trail on the Lake Renomee side and a five-foot trail on the Lake Toho side, so it's already in the culvert design. So I did forward that to, um,
It kind of works. I went out and measured them, uh,
You, you have to look at the plans because it has,
But I mean, I measured the culvert and, and the, all those spaces there. It's not ten feet, but there's,
No, it's ten because you have to take the guardrail out, and then you put jersey barrier, and then there, so the county didn't put the jersey barrier in because there was no sidewalk to tie into, so the expense of doing all that, so it is designed for that, but you have to take the guardrail out and put jersey barrier in. But I wanted you to know that because I, it seems, every time I see it come up, it seems like no one realizes that the culvert is sized for,
No, I, 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 I went out and, and that's why we were running it, the ten-foot one on that side, because it was sized that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, I mean, so that's it really. I ju, I don't like the kids squeezed in inside of a road. Regardless if we put some railing and stuff, it just feels like, um,
Okay.
that's a lot. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, that we got to, I guess, get a consensus with a couple other council members, but, but there you go.
Thank you.
Kind of look at, uh, boat ramp, and I think, uh, Nathan has probably hit it head-on spot. Looks like the increase of people that are going to be coming there more, we're going to need more, more boat ramps than what we've got. You know, at least one or two more, I think.
Does, does this layout take into account the, the little muck island that Fish and Wildlife built out here? You know, when they were cleaning and burning and all that? Is, is this plan taking that into consideration?
I, I'm sorry, the muck island?
Yeah, when Fish and Wildlife cleaned and burned out in this area, they put out, like, I don't know what it ended up looking like, but is that going to affect this area? Okay.
This, this came out off the, the aerials, the most current aerials in terms of where the ramp was located, and we just use the existing ramp contingent.
Well, but the muck ramp is just,
Oh, oh, the, the, oh, oh, oh.
To the north side of it.
Yeah, no, we, we, we were just dealing with the, um,
Okay, so you didn't, they didn't, that didn't come into it?
Any other question?
Yep.
Trace? You first.
Go ahead, deputy.
Mr. Trace? Mr. Trace, I recognize you. Go.
Okay. So, uh, just to kind of echo Dep, um, Councilwoman Matheny's, um, comments, I, I, I kind of like the separation of some of the uses with the boat ramp and the parking there. I, I agree that the splash pad is too close to that area. I mean, we didn't utilize all of the, the lakefront. Could all of those active-type uses be scooted down past the kayak drop-off? Because we, we, we have a lot more room kind of as we go further down. I don't know what's encumbered by Heavenly Hooves and, and not, but.
Well, you know, you, you don't have right to the lakefront there. You can see, your, your property line pushes back away from the lake there, so we can move things further down, but you may not have direct lake access on some of these components.
Uh, because, because I have a feeling once these improvements are made to the boat ramp, a lot more boats, especially once, hopefully, we start construction on the, the, um, the current boat ramp, the big boat ramp, um, uh, down by Krabby Bills and move that further west, then, you know, this won't get really busy because I don't get shut down or moved around or messed around with, so, um, we, we don't really have any expansion because we're putting all these hard elements on that side.
Right, and because we're also preserving the, the beachfront in this condition here, which was a request, one of the, the public requests.
Oh, yeah, I definitely think that should stay, especially we can't, I don't think we can,
And the other thing we're constrained with now, this, this is, this is up to the council's pleasure. This is a heavily, heavily, um, oaked environment with some beautiful oaks. Um, we have perfectly stayed out of those just because, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna raise that a red flag. Now, if we do remote parking in some location where you have a trailer and you go, okay, yeah, I didn't get the, I wasn't the lucky first 20 there, but I can park my trailer, um, over next to another spot that we find that's open, and, and you park your trailer, which I've done with my boat many times, and then walk back to the ramp. Those, those are considerations, but we were just trying to do little impact, hard impact on the site as possible at this point in time.
Yeah, a, agreed. I was just talking, some, some area between that tree hammock along the lake, south of the canoe launch and that wetland, the borrow pit, whatever it is on there, um, the wetland boardwalk area, just some of those elements kinda moving down there.
Okay, but that, those are ob, uh, definitely considerations.
Yeah, and then the, the ball field, I mean, would it be too costly to just move the ball field? Because it seems like that's a constraint for that whole area.
Well, we, we, we looked at those options before and, and, uh, we got in direction, kinda leave it right where it is. The site is, is, is not as, it's, it's a wet site, especially as you get away from the lake. It's pretty mucky and when it rains, it's bad. So those, those are the higher and drier spots, so again, without trying to spend additional money, we, we, we were working in a sort of a constrained way, uh, trying not to overdo stuff.
Yeah.
But th, those are considerations that were looked at.
And then, um, I love it when you put budget estimates with things as they come up. Um, and then do we have an estimate, it wasn't in the presentation, but for the, the trail itself to connecting to like,
Oh, no, I, I, I've done the takeoff on the trail linear foot. I don't recall what it is off the top of my head, but we, um, did we give you a number on that yesterday? I don't, I don't think we've, we've put a number to that yet in terms of what that would cost.
But is that, that's probably something we can do with mobility fees as a separate project and just kinda go with that, right? Bill walked away, but, um, I don't know if that's something we could give direction to along the lines with, with the direction.
And we're just starting that right now in terms of the, uh, the, the trail study to get the concept in place right now, so that'll be right behind this.
Okay.
Whatever we, we finally decide on, um, uh, how we're gonna move with this, forward with this.
And then, um, uh, Bill or Dan, do you either remember if the heavenly hooves, is that in perpetuity or was there a, a, a date certain for that agreement?
I think it's in perpetuity, isn't it?
It is? Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure, because we're kinda planning all around it and it's, I didn't know if it was gonna come back to the city.
When the deal was done for Chisholm Park, that was a big part of it, that that would stay pretty much exactly the way it is.
Okay, it was before me, so I just don't remember. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Askew?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple things that I see here. We just got approved for a seaplane base. Would love the future to bring a fly-in of 100 planes for a weekend to come here. A huge economic development.
On this lake as well as the, uh,
That doesn't,
I mean, right now it's over in front of the, uh, lakefront, I guess, yeah.
Right, but if, uh, we plan on bringing, let's say, 100 planes, our lakefront's not gonna be able to handle it. That could probably handle it, but not right now. The way that that's designed, that's not gonna be able to handle. Where would be the overflow for boats? I can just see them lining up the road. Um, that parking doesn't seem like it's gonna address that, and I'm all,
It would not.
Um, if you're gonna do a, two separate roads, maybe the separate, separate road is just for the playground, not for everything. And, and the lesson learned from Krabby Bills is like, push the playground away from where you're gonna have a lot of people coming there, so, especially dropping boats off and things like that.
And now, again, that was driven by the fact that you just put in a new playground there, so we were being conservative and again, holding that as a, as a placeholder and working around that component as opposed to saying, let's just tear it all up and start over again. Um, but there's, if, if we're looking at dealing with, like I say, let's look at what the seaplane overflow could be, what that parking could be, and say, let's look at the entire layout and whether, whether it's worth moving the ball field, whether it's worth moving the, uh, and, and not be constrained by those things, even though you spent good money on them recently, but in the long vision, if it's, makes more sense in your mind to, to move those along, we can surely, um, look at other alternatives. And what I would suggest I would do is more, more likely, just come back with some quick sketches that are just more, almost, um, uses, not a pretty picture yet, and, and let you all as a, as a group, either send them individually, comment back to those, and we can come back with something that's a little more definitive.
And is the beach there? Is that gonna be a swimming beach there?
It, it can be. We, we are gonna, uh, buoy it off between the two, um, uh, docks there, so you could, but it's pretty shallow as it, as it goes out. It doesn't, you know, it, uh, I don't know how deep it'll be, uh, when you get up to the buoy areas, but it's, it's,
Right, it's not very deep at our beach, so.
No, and, and when the water's low, it's probably gonna be all beach and no water.
I, I like all the suggestions that you guys just had about the seaplane. I didn't even think about the seaplane and the boats. Um, I certainly wanna try to preserve the trees. Um, that's one of the beauty of, of the park. And then, I know we just did the park improvements out there, but I, I mean, can you not move the, the park? I mean, would you have to throw it out, or can you uninstall it, reinstall it? You can? So, I mean, I, and also, I don't know, uh, when you do, if you come back and give us sketches, I don't know what the Battle of Narcoosi uses out there. If you could show, like, do they use that whole rectangle there between the trees and the, the trail? Because I, you know, because you see like a road kind of over there. I'm like, I would feel more comfortable if the road was on the outside of the ball field than going in between the ball field and, uh, the playground and the splash pad and all that, but, you know, maybe if we look at it.
I, it, if I sent back to everyone the first three concepts, because some of those things were addressed in early on concepts, where we had roads on the other side, we had roads this side, and, and there was a whole series of those things that, that looked at different options. I mean, so we weren't just sort of doing nuanced differences between, we, we threw uh, some significantly different concepts up there that you could, the early concepts, uh, that we used to present to the public, um, we could respond to those as well. And I think some of those are already addressed maybe somewhere, because they're not so much, it's more the road that it could, not so much the play areas and things like that, because that was kinda stayed consistent in terms of where the splash pad was and playgrounds and those kinds of things.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see some options.
Before we go any further with the council making any kind of decisions, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? I think I just need to cover that base. So what's your pleasure?
Um, could we postpone this vote and maybe see some other options?
Yes. Do we have, oh, we need the consensus on that?
Yes, sir.
An agreement?
Yeah, I think we need to tie in the boat ramps, too.
I think that's gonna be a real problem.
So what is the mechanism? Um, we, we have some, some designs that are always done that you could look at right now, and I don't know how, if, if we go through Stephanie with that and she gets it all back to you, or do?
That would be up to the city manager and Stephanie working that out.
We'll, we'll work that out with you, sir.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to, as expeditiously as possible so we don't waste anyone's time or your time that we can put these things forward, so when we come back again, we can maybe have a, a, a plan that is more to,
Staff will work that out with you. We're very grateful for all the work and,
Well, we, we,
work you've done thus far.
Well, we appreciate everything you've offered us, and, uh, we love working down here, and we hope to continue doing work with you all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We look forward to continuing.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, could you read item number three?
Resolution number 2020-312R, a resolution in the City Council of City of St. Cloud, Florida, approving a third amendment to the interlocal agreement between St. Cloud and the Orlando Utilities Commission. OUC dated April 25, 1997, providing for the envi, environmental cleanup of the power plant site by OUC, an increase of the rate base percentage paid by OUC to the city, an extension agreement until 2042, authorizing the mayor to execute the third amendment and providing an effective date.
Could you please say your name and address for the record, please?
Sir, William Surgeon, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and council members. If you recall, several years ago, we started talking about cleaning up the power plant. We have seven areas of concern there, based on many years of use of that plant and some of those hazardous materials leaking into the, into the ground system. Uh, we went back in February and started negotiating with St. Cloud to clean up that power plant. They have the technical expertise and the knowledge and the team that can do that. So they've proffered a, a, a third amendment to their agreement that they have in place right now. In addition to that, we were able to negotiate an additional revenue transfer based off the net sales of the service area in the City of St. Cloud. And so I just wanna give some of those highlights. October 1st, 2026, the revenue-based disbursement percentage paid to the city will go from 9.5% to 9.75%. October 1st, 2032, the revenue-based disbursement will go from 9.75% to 10%. In addition to that, OUC will manage and complete the cleanup of the power plant site to a maximum of $6 million. If you remember, the workshop we had, I believe last year, uh, was about $4.4 million. As you know, any kind of project like that, you may run into some issues and have to have that, use some of that additional money as contingency. The, if the revenue costs, or I'm sorry, the cleanup cost costs more than $6 million, we'll be responsible for those additional costs. We don't foresee that happening, but you, like I said, we get in there and start doing the cleanup. We don't know what we're gonna have. If there's an unused balance, that will go to the business development and cons, or retention fund. Right now, what that looks like as far as a straight-line analysis, assuming no growth, uh, right now, net sales is 7,245,170, which is 688,291 per month, and an annual transfer amount of 8,259,492. From 2026 to 2031, it goes to 9.75%, which is 7,245,170, which is $706,000 a month, 404, and a yearly of 8,476,848. And then in 2032, in the last 10 years of the contract, it goes to 10%, or 7.2517, 724,517, 8,694,204. Based on the current customer usage and rate, would be an increase of 217,356 per year for five years, or 1,086,780. Extending it further, using the same numbers for 10 more years, 2032 to 2042, the increase amount would be 2,173,560. Therefore, it's fair, and as a conservative analysis, that the extension of the contract is projected to provide additional 3,263,40 in revenue. That's just based off a straight-line analysis with no projected growth. So if you take the OUC model, they actually used a 1.5% rate of growth, and if you look at the number, it's $7 million currently. I showed you those numbers in 2019, to 20,000,000, .3 million in 2042. That's what we're projecting at that growth rate. If you look at other publicly traded utilities across the state, um, several other entities get, uh, the transfer rate, and I actually can't read the slide very well, but actually, I can tell you where, if you go to the right, the second one to the right is 10%. That would be St. Cloud at the end of 2042. So we get one of the highest transfer rates around the state, and that's effective return of 9.2% based on a two-year look-back revenue basis. So you can see a significant increase in revenue to the city. If we think about the partnership we've had for OUC for many years, they have the expertise and bandwidth to manage an initiative of cleaning up the power plant in addition to providing us additional revenue. I think as a city manager, for the last three years, OUC has been a partner that has served us well. They have one of the best reliability rates in the state. We meet on a quarterly basis with our, uh, team here with OUC, and, and they show those numbers all the time. They're very consistent. They've put a lot of money into infrastructure and provided a lot of community partnerships over the years. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Not, we'll have discussion or motion by council.
Councilmember Matheny?
Stay there.
Thank you.
Uh, another thing I wanted to point out that you didn't mention, but I know you're well aware of it, is, you know, when the hurricanes come through and the power lines go down and all the cleanup that's associated, getting the power back up, we don't have to handle any of that, and we don't pay for any of that, you know? So that's another great service that, um, OUC gives us. And also, I don't believe that the, um, that, when we get the transfer, it's, I don't think that's accounted for in the dollars. Like, they don't reduce, like, hey, we had to pay out all this money to, for, for hurricane relief?
That, that's correct, Councilmember Matheny. And I actually did neglect to mention that, and, and comparatively, the City of Orlando, that would be a cost reduction to the City of Orlando with that transfer if we had a hurricane.
Yeah, and, and I mean, you know how long it takes for us to get reimbursed after hurricane events?
Um, like five years?
So millions of dollars could potentially be out of the city coffers trying to get that reimbursed, but I, I, I'm in support of this agreement. I think it's a great thing, and I, for one, want to get that power plant site cleaned up. I feel like we've been talking about it for way, way, way too long, and, um, you know, that's something I'd like to get moving forward.
Councilmember Askew?
I think, uh, one of the things we're not talking about here is their community relations they have with the people around them and how they're embedded into our community from the chamber to any of these, some of these events that are going on. So I really appreciate that part of the OUC thing. I'm in favor as well.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Well, before you pass, I just wanna say thank you, Mr. Surgeon, for the work that you did negotiating this. I think you've done an excellent job, uh, negotiating this increase, and, man, I, we certainly need to do this cleanup. It should've been done a long time ago, and it's nice to know that we, it looks like we got enough money there to, in this contract to more than take care of something that should've been taken care of a long time ago. So we have a motion from, did I say something, Mr. Cooper?
Just a quick question. Bill, you and I had talked about the timeline, time that's still left. Refresh me and tell me where we were at.
So the, the current contract goes to 2032, and Mr. Menceres might help me out with the history here, so this is a third amendment.
2032?
So it goes to the current agreement, would be the second amendment, correct?
Yes.
So this is the third amendment. It adds an additional 10 years, so 2032 to 2042. So we're still in the second amendment part of the contract, so it'd go to the third amendment, 2032 to 2042.
So we had, we had two amendments that were already, they were buckled in, or, or, in other words, we did 10 or 20, whatever it was, and then we added to it again? Is that,
Yes, sir.
Am I right?
Yes.
We did it twice?
No, once. There was one extension of time, one of those amendments extended the time
Okay.
for the term of the contract. To bring it to 2032.
Are you through?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion for Councilmember Matheny and a second for Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk? You have something else?
Yeah, I just, it was kinda glossed over a little bit of the, the timing of that, um, going from nine and a half to nine and three-quarter percent actually happens before the end of our current contract, so it's, it's actually more revenue than we would have currently got.
That's correct.
With our current contract, plus the $6 million. Um, I do have, you know, a little bit of, uh, worry a, anytime that the, the fee increases come of, we don't really have a say in those, in those fee increases, but, I mean, I guess we could just go to the, the board meetings when that stuff's happening and kinda voice our concern. Uh, but I think overall, as a, as a trend, the, the rates have gone down over the past 10, 20 years or whatever, so, um, so that's,
If I could, Mayor, before you guys vote, um, thank you for the kind words, but anytime you do negotiation, you have a team behind you, so I'd like to thank Mr. Menceres, Veronica Miller, Deputy City Manager, Finance Director Wendy Colazo, and I'd like to thank the OUC team. Um, we did go back and forth for several months, uh, but they were very professional, and we came to what I thought was a very good agreement for both OUC and the City of St. Cloud.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, read out of number three.
Discussion of possible action regarding council serving on committee boards of other entities.
Well, I think all of us have committee assignments. Are there any board assignments that any of you are wanting to change or make a, yes?
I have one.
Your microphone.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I have one. I'm actually, uh, the, on the Board of Directors and a board member of Florida Municipal Power Association, and because of my work schedule, it's very difficult for me to get on those calls. Um, it's done, um, through COVID, it's done, um, via telephone, and I'd like to see if, I was gonna ask Mr. Trace if he'd be interested in taking, I know he has an interest in utilities and power, if he'd be interested in taking over that role. It's, uh, quarterly.
Is that different than the one?
I'm asking, please.
Isn't he already on one?
I thought it was already on the power. Oh, that's, so is that, um, FMPA?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's the Board of Directors, which is different than the, um, I'm on the policy committee?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
All right. We'll take care of it. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Any other changes or?
I'm fine.
Counsel?
No, I'm good.
Go say like we are then?
Sure.
All right. You got it. Mr. Menzares, what do you have for us?
Other than the wish everybody a happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah as it may apply to you and wish you all a great season and as we roll and complete this interesting year and move on to hopefully a better one.
Amen. Mr. Sturgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several good news items I'd like to share with council. First off, if you recall back in budget minute one, several, about an hour ago, we took $838,000 into the city coffers from CDVG funds. We have a, a proposal for the city to provide $50,000 to the food distribution events here in St. Cloud and it can be operated through the food pantry because they have to provide a lot of services and they have to provide documentation to use that money. Additionally, and I'm going to bring this back at the next council meeting, rental and mortgage assistance of $100,000 and we'll have that planned for you next council meeting and also outdoor restaurant dining furniture for $100,000. That's through the CARES Act. Obviously, we want people to move outside during the COVID pandemic, so I'd like to inform you of that. Secondly, several years ago, the City of St. Cloud became self-insured for workers' compensation. And about four years ago, we hired Mr. Joe Etter. And if you know anything about insurance and what they call modification rate, it's how you get your insurance rating for workers' compensation. And it's based on risk and the number of injuries and things like that. In 2015, it was 1.76. In 2020, it's .76. If you know anything about federal contracts, the state contracts, you have to have a mod rate less than one to even bid on contracts. But that's not what's important. What's important is we've saved over $4.2 million because we became self-insured in workers' compensation. In addition to that, we saved almost a million dollars in claims because of our safety programs. Recently, just hired a new staff development and training coordinator who will drive those programs even more and improve our safety even more. And it's always nice to be able to say things are like this, our new, and he's been here about four or five months now, Jeffrey Cooper, who's our Deputy Finance Director, was just certified through the Government Finance Officers Association Program, which includes courses in accounting and financial reporting, debt administration, financial administration, municipal budget and treasury management. I imagine those tests are pretty difficult and he passed all of those with flying colors. So now we have six members or five members of our finance team. I'm glad I don't have finance, I can't count. Jeffrey Cooper, Donna Cooley, Gloria Manuel, Wendy Colazo and Suzette Cover has one more test and she'll be a certified government finance officer also. So congratulations to them.
Congratulations. Awesome.
I'd like to wish our city council Merry Christmas and all of our citizens, please be safe and enjoy the holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Matheny?
Um, I just have one question and I, I won't ask him to come up and do it now, Nassim, but could, could he send us an email kind of updating where we are with DOT reviewing the 192 flooding issue? Because I know we asked for a pretty timely response from them and not to get bogged down. Maybe we would get the state reps to get involved if they were dragging their feet. I don't want to drag them up here and put them on the spot. If he could just send something.
Give me a thumbs up, we'll get that to you guys.
And then just wish everybody a happy and safe holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Bill, Sturgeon, you and I had talked about, down at Chisen Park this morning, about some of the trash cleanup and tell me, tell me what's going on. And you and I talked about maybe getting a ranger out there and.
Yes, sir. So you know about the garbage complaint we had over the weekend?
Yes, sir.
Where the garbage can, so we've added an additional day, solid ways to go out there and pick up those garbage cans. And mid-year, we're going to look at our budget. More than likely, I'm going to come back with a recommendation to come back with, to hire some park rangers that will work, you know, through the weekends and everything to monitor things like that, have so many present in our parks. Because like I said, they're getting used and, you know, to make sure the alcohol is not out of control.
Not on, not only just the lakefront of other places.
Correct. So Chisen Park, Hastings Ranch and all other parks, they would have multiple parks.
We need some rangers.
Yes, sir.
That would be on, at least on the weekend anyway.
Correct.
Okay. That, that would help, I think. You and I also looked at this morning, um, the cleanup at the lakefront here. Some of the things that you and I had seen, there's cleaning, a little bit more cleaning up when you walk away where you and I, I showed you. Is there a chance we could, the city employees could clean that up or?
Yes, I've already talked to Miss Holtkamp, what we witnessed and we'll get that cleaned up.
Some, some of those rocks that are out in the lake, right, or not really in the lake, but they're right at the edge of the lake. They're, they look very bad.
Like I said, part of that's part of the wear system, but there was some trash around there and we'll get that cleaned up as we walk down there.
And when I was out there a couple of days ago, talked to one of the gentlemen that was working there and he said something, there's a lot of trash out there in the, in the water, in the lake right now. Nobody's aware of it until I stood there and watched and I, he was picking up a piece and he showed it to me. There's a lot of trash out there. So is there any way that we can get it?
I talked to staff about having several lakefront parks.
You're going to have to get an airboat. Somebody's going to have to go through there and clean it up because it's, it's really bad.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot of stuff there. And last question, I had two or three gentlemen's, people that have called me about traffic light at Deer Creek and Canoe Creek Road, right there at the In-N-Out, Ingress, Egress. Of getting a light out there, at least getting a temporary light that we could put out there until the county gets some money. They don't have money to be able to do that. But if we could talk to and see if we can get that pushed down the road a little bit quicker or can we get it? At least talk to the county and get some kind of a temporary light put out there? I mean, every afternoon, I, I, I went out there this afternoon and I turned around and came out of there. Took me 20 minutes to get out of there on a two-lane road.
I think we gave Bill direction a couple of months ago for a warrant study on that.
And it is warranted. I've got an email here that Chuck obtained.
Oh, perfect.
From the county saying it is warranted. And then it says that the intersection is to be signaled, it'll be ranked against other qualifying intersections and scheduled for funding and construction. I can't get that straight. Thank you. But like I said, it's, it does say it is warranted according to this from Henry Salinas, from Transportation and Transit.
When, when did we find that out? I've been talking about this for a year.
This actually came, this, I didn't get this, this, Mr. Cooper provided this from.
I got a copy of it.
From CAP.
Cappy Lee.
Right, but this is to Cairo, I guess it's a citizen that inquired.
There's two or three.
There's an email chain here from citizens and an HOA that I just got tonight.
Yeah, I did too.
And it also refers to, that we had reached out to them and requested, let me find it here. Your concern was also brought to, this is on June 15th, as you recall. Your concern was brought to us by the City of St. Cloud from previous months. Thus, we have requested data collection last March of this year, 2020, for traffic signal warrant. However, due to stay-home order, pandemic, traffic engineering suspended all traffic data collection since March of this year in the sense that traffic volume will not be accurate, especially during national emergency. It will only proceed when the state orders and, and obviously they have done their warrant study because that's what I just learned tonight. So would that be council direction for me to work with the county to get a temporary? They've been pretty good to us about this, but I.
I'm perfectly fine putting in a permanent one. Get a proposal for services.
I'd like to get a permanent, at least get a temporary here as quickly as I can because.
Are we willing to fund it? Because they're going to fund it.
I'm fine.
I think we go forward.
We have millions of dollars in mobility fees.
Whatever we've got to do, we need to do it.
It's the safety of our citizens, it's a county road.
We need to take a close look about where the mobility fees can be used for a tra, for a traffic lane.
It can be used for safety improvements, right?
We'll have to look at it. Certainly we'll look at it.
What about transportation impact?
Well.
We still have money in that too.
Well, we needed to, well, we can look at that issue and try to work towards trying a funding source.
I'll make a commitment to bringing back next council meeting with.
That was my question. Can we move it?
Yep.
Move, can we move a little expedited on this, on this one? Because we've got so many people coming out of there, just a one lane out.
Direction, I will talk to them about temporary and come back with a proposal for the next meeting.
Are there any objections?
No.
Good to go.
Thank you all, appreciate that. Thank you. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to everybody else and just be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Askew?
Really, the, most of the stuff we've been talking about tonight is based under taxes and things like that. One of the biggest things that could help us up here is shop local. You buy your gas here in the county, you pay for your stuff here in the county or the City of St. Cloud. That money stays here in the City of St. Cloud, helps us build sidewalks, police, fire, things like that. So shop local and have a great holiday.
You said exactly what I was going to say. So perfect.
Councilmember Trace?
Good, thank you.
Mr. Menzares or Mr. Sturgeon, one, could you just, just for the record, update us on the pre-absention that is taking place when it comes to food trucks? So everybody and the public is aware of that.
Well, in this past legislative session, the, the legislator adopted a bill that preempted local governments from prohibiting self-contained, mobile, food vending, food dispensing vehicles. And so as you're aware, several years ago, the city moved forward with a restriction on, on food trucks and only allowed them with special events related to, especially special event permits. So that state preemption now prohibits the city from prohibiting these type of vehicles on any private property within the city. We still can regulate them on the city's right-of-ways and the city's parks and, and, in public areas. But in terms of on private property, the city is now prohibited from, from essentially prohibiting these vehicles from being there. The key is they have to be self-contained vehicles, which means they can't be connected to an adjacent structure. They have to have their own power, they have to have their own water and utility supplies and they have to be movable. And so that's the preemption that we have. There has been, as I understand it, there's been a lot of discussion about one particular unit that's located on 192 as you come into St. Cloud. And we are, the city code enforcement staff is working on that, that project as that particular use. I spoke with the code enforcement office this morning about that and there was, there were a couple of issues associated with it. Number one, we weren't sure that it met the definition of being a self-contained vehicle, but the code enforcement is working on that. The other one is they had set up basically an outdoor seating facility, which is, was against the city code because it's not permitted and it's not an appropriate accessory use. And they have been cited for that also and given the initial, initial notices under the code enforcement process. So if they don't come with the compliance, those, it will move through the code enforcement process.
And also really frustrating, a lot of preemption issues have been constantly flowing out of Tallahassee. That sure created a lot of hassle for the issue of home rule and local municipalities. And I think we're going to continue to see more of that and so that's one of them.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. That, that actually jogged something. Next meeting, Madam Clerk, if you'll put discussion and possible action on the legislative session coming up, it's later this year. And talk to our lobbyists and then once you kind of start thinking of direction, obviously we want to protect home rule. Got some other policy ideas, but they recommend we kind of go after policy ideas. I'm still going to ask for money, of course, but. So, but just so we could think about that from now on, the meeting in January.
Good.
And get that prepared. We did a good job last year, I think we do a good job this year too.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooper? Join in what you just said about where like, like Home Depot where they've got a facility right there and they do hot dogs or whatever they cook there. Is, is that permissible there? And it's not out on 13th Street?
They, I believe the Home Depot permit for that facility included that area for them to have an operating external concession.
They rent that out to an individual.
I get that, but they, but I think they're permitted under their, their permit for that structure to have it when it came through the process. And that's what I said earlier, that there, the city's code allowed for individual property owners to go through a permitting process for special events or things like that or get a, or get an actual site plan approved that would include that in their, in their approvals. So that's.
I mean, if it's okay at Home Depot, what's, what's the difference on 13th Street?
Well, they got an exemption.
Well, because the, 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 the operators of, of, of the owners of the property on 13th Street could move forward with the permitting process to have a permanent or basically concessions. Then they could go through the permitting process, whether it would meet the requirements of the city code or not, I do not know. But they could apply for, for a permit to, to allow for that. What we're suggesting to you is that if it meets the state statute definition of those type of uses, it, the city is preempted from requiring such a permit. We'd have, they'd have, they'd be enabled to be there regardless of what's going on at Home Depot or anywhere else. I mean, it's, it's preemption.
I mean, if it's fair for one, it should be fair for all or, or neither, neither for none of them. I understand. But the, the legality uses, they've got to be legal.
Yes, sir.
That's the home rule.
And Mr. Anderson just pointed out to me, the Home Depot facility was, and that was, was in place and permitted before the city addressed the issue of, of food trucks within the area. It's been around for a while.
Thanks, sir. Just want to thank all of the city staff for all the hard work you guys do, especially with all the increases and challenges we continue to have with the COVID and hope all of you have a, just an awesome, wonderful, blessed Christmas celebration and wonderful new year. And especially all those that are part of our city, we wish them also just a blessed, wonderful, enjoyable, family-filled Christmas. With that, we come to our information section, report section, Thursday and Friday, Sep, December 24th and 25th, 2020. City offices will be closed for the Christmas holiday. Friday, January the 1st, 2021, city offices will be closed for the New Year's holiday. Thursday, January 14th, 2021, city council meeting will take place at 6:30 PM here at the community center again. Remind you that reports, warrant list number two is available and the tree advisory committee minutes, except for September 2020, were approved and are available for your review. With that, we will be adjourned.